Tried to stay up on what was going on and I appreciate everyone who sent their well wishes and it's a pleasure, let me tell you, to be back here.
Well, it's nice to have you back.
Thank you. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative details that I need to take care of. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If that announcement is made, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the front or the back stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, who's Donna tonight in Michelle's absence. This is for the purpose of a record, not a transcript. But when you come to the podium, if you would please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium by name and address, and please speak clearly into the microphone. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight. We have eight items that are what I would characterize as being relatively usual items that we have customarily dealt with. And then we have the last item on our agenda, which has been on our agenda quite a number of times, had a public hearing in May, April, or May that was adjourned to tonight's meeting and kept open. We've had hearings on it in the past. I see that there are far more people here tonight than what would normally be anticipated with the eight other items on the agenda. So what I had thought might be in order to do, and I, of course, will defer to the rest of the board if anyone disagrees, but I thought what we could do is take the first eight cases, hear all those, then deliberate on those so that the people with those can leave and they'll know what the decisions were on their case. Then we'll take a small break and take up the Densmore Road hearing, because I imagine a lot of you are here for that. And you're going to be sitting here for probably about an hour before we would even get to that, so if you'd like to leave and come back, try and just to make it as easy on you as possible. We'll stay as long as we need to stay in order to hear everyone out. I just thought that might be a little more efficient way of dealing with everything that's on the agenda tonight. So we will still stick with our usual procedure of taking everything in the order they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. Once the case is called, the procedure that we follow is that the applicant comes to the podium, identifies himself by name and address, then raises their right hand to be sworn. After they've been sworn, then they present their case to the board. Once the applicant has presented their case to the board and answered any questions or addressed any comments that members of the board may have during their presentation, we'll open it up to public input. There are three categories of public input so far that have been identified. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application, and we would ask any of you who want to speak in favor of the application to line up along the western wall there and come right up and identify yourself and then say whatever you have to say. Then the second category, which follows the first two, are those who are in favor, are those who are opposed. And again, we follow the same procedure. Line up, come up to the podium, address your comments to the board. This public input portion is the opportunity for you to address the board. It is not to engage in a discussion with the applicant. It's not to engage in a discussion with other members who are here, citizens who are here to speak. If the board has questions, we will certainly ask them of you and engage you in a discussion, but otherwise, it's the opportunity for you to give us your input with respect to the case. The last category that would be identified are those who have no opinion really regarding the application, but want to talk to us about it, or in reference to it, or some issue that pertains to it. After the public input has been completed, the case will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. Once all the public hearings are concluded, then the board generally takes a break. Tonight, that break will come after the first eight have been heard and decided. Then we'll take the break, then we'll take up the Densmore Road hearing, and then we'll take another break after that hearing is concluded, and then we'll discuss and deliberate on the Densmore Road case. There's no further public input during the deliberation portion of the meeting, but you're welcome to stay and listen if you would like. If you choose not to stay, you can go home and catch the rest of the meeting on Channel 12 if you have cable. And if you don't, or you don't want it, you'd want to watch something else that might be offered on one of the other variety of channels. Hard to believe that would be the case. You can call into the town hall tomorrow morning after nine o'clock, and the planning and zoning department will be glad to tell you what decision was reached with respect to each case. So having said all that, we will move to our first case on the agenda.
Thank you. ZB 1706-1, upon the matter request by Mary Ellen Spear for an area variance to construct a two-level deck with less than required front setback on a waterfront lot on premises 309 Lakefront Lane North in an R2 residential district.
Hello, I'm Mary Ellen Spear, and this is my contractor, Nick Dorizio.
All right, if both of you could raise your right hands, do you each swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we applied for a permit and actually were granted one to construct. It was actually to replace an existing deck that was unsafe and not plum with a new deck. And then it was brought to our attention that this step in the process had been missed, and so we're here tonight.
All right, and this is at 309 Bayfront Lane North?
Yes.
And that's where you live, because I cut you short, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, yes.
Okay. And is this, this deck's going to be a little bigger than the one that's there, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
I was down there yesterday. Are you going to put a diving board off the side? I see you've got water pretty much right up to the house now, right?
Maybe a slide.
Yeah.
There used to be a backyard.
And this is just one deck, right? Not two?
This is a two-tiered deck.
Two-tiered deck, okay, so I did get that.
And they previously existed, a two-tiered deck, but the structure, previous structure was completely structurally not sound. So we removed it, built the exact same footprint, except for came out two more feet. And we did follow your guidelines, and we went through the town, we got a permit. We actually had two inspections, passed both, and then on the third one, the inspector came back and said, "Hold on a minute, something's wrong." And I guess part of the due diligence, something was missed.
All right, so this is, it is there now, and it's built the code with a permit, and then they said, "Oh, you're too close to the water."
They said we skipped this step, yeah.
Well, you didn't skip it, they skipped it, correct. Okay, all right.
So it's just two feet further out toward the water?
Yes, sir.
Both levels?
Yes.
Actually, it's a lot more feet closer than that now.
Oh, yeah, true.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Is there anybody in your neighborhood that has complained about it or objects to it at all? Did you know?
Well, one neighbor had some concerns, but has subsequently provided a letter supporting it. And I think a lot of my other neighbors are here tonight to say they are, they actually like it better. It's a much better-looking deck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Good evening. Anne Fields, 317 Bayfront Lane North, and I live right next door to Ellen, and I'm here to tell you that it's beautiful, and it's a beautiful home improvement. And anytime a neighbor improves their property, well, that fares well for us. And right about now, we could use some home improvement in that neighborhood. So just want to let you know I'm right next door, I stare right at it every day, and it's beautiful.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody who'd like to talk about decks, water, flooding, anything like that? All right? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case.
ZB 1706-2, upon the matter request by Christine and Matthew Sowers for an area variance to install a six-foot-high fence and side yard exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 407 Sagamore Drive in an R1 residential district.
My name is Matt Sowers, I live at 407 Sagamore Drive, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come here to speak.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, we have a six-foot fence already in the back of our lot. We have a double lot. We don't really have a backyard. And I have three kids, one six, one almost four, and one nine months, and a husky mix. And I want to keep my kids and my dog in my yard. And the problem with a four-foot fence is that my dog has already jumped a five-foot fence at my previous home. So I figured, why not go another foot, so we can keep the dog in the yard? I really don't want to get the dog out in the street, I don't want the kids out in the street. I'm trying to keep, actually, I am keeping the same aesthetics, because the fence is going to be the exact same that's already established in the backyard, and it's just going to run up to the front of the house. In the future, I'd like to hopefully put a pool in. This residence we had had a pool, and I'd like to do that. I don't want to go back and readjust a fence for something that I am planning in the future if I can come up with the funds for. There's no safety issue involved with it, the fence, if it goes to the front of my home, on both homes, on either side of me, you still have perfect view of the road, and it's still offset from the road. It's cut my yard basically in half. So it's still offset enough, so there's no issues for pedestrians or motorists driving down the road. Obviously, I'm assuming you guys have already gotten my letter of intent that I had put in before, so I don't want to go through that. And I guess the last thing is, is we do have a trampoline in the yard, and neighborhood kids use it, but I would like to try to deter them, or at least have them knock on the door and ask to come use it, which I'm fine with people using it, I just don't want to come home and see neighborhood kids playing on it with no supervision, because I don't want anybody to get hurt. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions or comments from the board?
The only comment, I was out to the gentleman's house the other day, and we talked about, you know, the negativity about having the fence come all the way to the front corner of the house. I don't know if anybody else was out there, but we did discuss a little bit. I know he doesn't want to, but I, you know, have you thought about any, if you were to come back a little bit, so you, like what we talked about, by your chimney?
I'm open to ideas, I just want to maximize my yard as much as possible. I don't want to cut it up where, now, I'm either in part of the yard or the other part of the yard, and worried about if kids are on one side of the fence, the other side of the fence. That's why I figured if I went to the front of my house, it still has enough property in the front, where it's not going to limit anybody who's going down the street, driving or walking, and it's still going to give me maximum space I can in the side of my, side of my house.
Is the chimney where the, there's a nice bush and some plantings?
Yes.
At the front corner, and then do they back up to the chimney?
The chimney's about halfway, halfway through the middle of the house. The problem is, is that just, I'd say, north of the chimney, there's two AC units that was put in by the previous owner. I figured that if I went in front of them, then I would take that eyesore away from, you know, neighbors, instead of cutting in front of them and having the fence on the other side of them.
Your lot seems to be quite deep, 140 deep. If you were to go just north of the chimney and behind the AC units, it's still going to give you probably 65% of backyard for the size, so still gives you quite a bit of room to put the pool and have the trampoline in and that. And then it offsets that front from looking like a wall. Again, that was a consideration we talked about, and I don't know if anybody else has got that same thought or not, but...
I would just comment that when we grant variances, they're variances that run with the land, with the actual piece of property. And when an applicant comes and says that the conditions that require the variance relate to the applicant as a person, where if you were to move to another house, you might have the exact same issues, that's not something very unique about the land. And in my opinion, moving this type of stockade fence at the front of Sagamore in line with the house would kind of change the character. But having it a little farther back from the front of the house would be something that wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood as much, because if every house on the street were to get a fence like this, it would significantly change the way it looks on the street, and it would change the character of the neighborhood. So in the application, I've not heard anything about the property itself that requires a fence in that location. So if the board were to, you know, consider your conditions, the fact that, you know, your family, you have kids and a dog and all that stuff, if the fence were a little farther back, it would be less of an impact on everyone else in the neighborhood. It's kind of the way that I'm seeing it to my fellow, my colleagues' point there, in terms of it moving back a little bit.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I note that there is a letter in the packet of neighbors, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven neighbors on Sagamore, live all around him, that are all in favor of it, and don't have, or not, no objection, is the way it's written.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, or side yards, or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case, move on to the next matter on the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
ZB 1706-3, upon the matter request by Nicholas Catalano for an area variance to park a commercial-type truck on premises 359 Harwick Road in an R1 residential district.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, evening.
Nicholas Catalano, I live at 359 Harwick Road in Arondequay.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm a, I'm writing this letter to apply for an area variance. Recently, I received a code violation from the town of Arondequay for my company vehicle parked in my double-wide driveway. I'm a project superintendent for Frontier Glass Inc. My job title entails me driving directly to and from job sites, and I'm also on call during the night, I'm sorry, I'm also on call during the night hours for emergency enclosures, board-up storefront, and doorlight repairs. On a daily basis, I am leaving in the company vehicle between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and coming back to my residence between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. The truck is always neatly backed in the double-wide driveway, mirrors are folded in, and the vehicle is at least, is cleaned at least once a week. I also have a couple pictures to go with that. Frontier Glass is located on 175 Colvin Street, on, 175 Colvin Street off of Maple Street in the city of Rochester. In the past month, months, there have been numerous break-ins to the work vehicles and property damage directly to our business while vehicles were parked at the shop. Having my work vehicle at my residence has saved myself and the company thousands of dollars in tools and company supplies by not being stolen or tampered with. Driving the company vehicle directly to and from job sites is part of my company procedure as a project superintendent that goes hand-in-hand with my pay package. Lastly, driving the company vehicle directly to, to work and back home has financially allowed us to have one vehicle, in which has saved our family from having multiple car payments and insurance to pay out. This helps my family immensely due to the fact that my wife is homecaring for our daughter. All, all in all, the property is well-maintained, and the truck is not obstructing the sidewalk, street, or view to anyone. I also took it upon myself to, on a couple sunny afternoons that we rarely get here in Rochester, to walk up and down the street and have a petition signed with my neighbors that signed it. I have the front and the back, if you guys want to look at that, if you want to pass that around. And just to sort of talk to them and see what they thought about it. Like I said, you know, I just wake up every day and go to try to make a dollar like the next person. I, well, my house is well-maintained, everything is nice and neat and in order, and majority of the time, the truck, obviously, is not there during the day. You know, I'm out on jobs and out and about, you know? And coincidentally, I get quite a few people that come up to me that I've handed business cards to, to help them with repairs. It's funny, because actually, earlier today, we did a shower install on Hurstbourne, which is two streets over, and the people said, "No, Nick, you're, you know, your house is fine, everything's fine, it doesn't bother us at all." So that's that. Lastly, there was actually a gentleman that called my boss and was very vulgar with him and very disrespectful to him about the situation, and I understand everybody has a different point of view. I respect that, I get it, but you got to be professional if you want to get somewhere in life, you know, and with people. So with that being said, that's, that's why I'm here.
When I went by and looked at it, I noticed that you have a carport at the back of the house.
Yes, sir.
That if you were to back the truck in under the carport, it would be much less visible as a commercial vehicle. What you'd see from the street would be the front of the hood.
Correct.
Now, in looking at it, I thought that maybe it might not quite fit under the carport.
Yep, I think it misses it by a foot at most.
And then I was thinking, well, you know, the carport's held up by four, four-by-fours. It looked to me like, one in each corner.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be beyond the realm of possibility to raise that up two feet, right? It's not attached to the house.
It's def, it's, it sits on the roof, it sits on the garage, and it, there's three on the, on the shed side, and then there's two in the rear of the carport, which is a great idea, but you got to talk to my wife, because she's the one with the, you know, the okay of me doing it kind of thing. But it is a great idea, I would love to do it, just the expense of doing it is where I would struggle with it.
Right, well, what we have to do is, is we, we're called upon to make decisions as to whether or not to give you an exemption from the requirements of the town code, which say that commercial vehicles are not allowed. And we've had some instances where we've allowed them because of special circumstances.
Sure.
Like people who are on call to provide emergency services during the night.
Yep.
Through their employer and need to have, have that, and there's a benefit to the town that derives from that.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've had other circumstances where it's been for the convenience of the employer, and quite frankly, the convenience of the employer versus the requirements of the town code, the employer doesn't generally fare very well with those. So in terms of if we're going to view favorably your request, one of the things that we're obligated to do is to minimize the exception that's granted to balance the interests of the town with the interests of the homeowner. So raising the carport two feet and being able to put the vehicle there so it's not as obviously a commercial vehicle, I mean, if that was the choice between having the vehicle allowed to be there and not having it allowed, and your wife saying she didn't want the carport raised two feet, I would think that the decision might be a little clearer, right? Because right now, the way it sits on the street, the way you back it into the garage, it's like a billboard.
Yep.
And I understand that, and we've, you've presented us with the petition, it's signed by neighbors at 371 Harwick, 349 Harwick, 350 Harwick, 325 Harwick, 570, something that starts with a P, can't read the writing.
Yeah.
306 Harwick, 295 Harwick, 326 Harwick, 546 Westchester, 340 Harwick, 340 Harwick, 598 Harwick, 408 Harwick, 15 Queensborough, 346 Harwick, 346 Harwick, 346 Harwick, 300 Harwick, 300 Harwick, 372 Harwick, 75 Park Road, 326 Harwick, 360 Harwick, 360 Harwick, 419 Hurstbourne, 615 Laurelton, 150 Harwick, and 37 Virgil Drive. And I, so I understand that most of your neighbors don't have a problem, right? And certainly, the views of your neighbors is a factor that we take into account in weighing what the impact of these requests are. But the fact that your neighbors approve of it, if that's all that was required, we'd just send out ballots and have them vote, and then we'd know what the result is, we wouldn't need to be here. Okay? So what I'm asking is, can that carport be raised as a way of minimizing the impact of a commercial vehicle being parked in a residential neighborhood that the code doesn't allow? And the fact that you are able to save money and all that is, we understand all of that, but that's not, our factors are, is there a practical hardship, as Mr. Polino mentioned a little while ago, that runs with the land, that allows us to grant an exception to what the zoning court code requires? That's what we have to find. And as I said, we have an obligation to minimize the, whatever impact that any variance we grant would have. So way, one way I see of minimizing having a billboard in your driveway evenings and weekends is to utilize that carport and raise it up a couple feet, if that's what needs to be done to be able to fit the truck under there.
Okay.
Is that something you're willing to consider?
I'd have to, I have to sort of, like, think about it and brainstorm, seeing, you know, what it would cost me, where I would get my supplies from. Obviously, it's going to take, it's going to have a timeline to it, I work, you know, full-time job, it'd be on the weekends, kind of thing. You know, and I don't know exactly what would entail, then how long it might take me to do it, but it is a thought, it is a possibility to talk about and maybe act on.
There's also another idea, but I don't know how, what about a regular van?
Now, um...
Can your, give you a regular van, would the height would, would fit into the carport, you wouldn't have to worry about the height.
Yep, now, the way, what we have for a fleet, we have a couple cube trucks, which obviously I have one of them, and then we have vans, the newer Sprinter vans, the Ford vans, and Chevy vans, but they have the rack on the side, which is not, I don't want to say it goes over 10 foot, but the van itself, obviously, is lower than 10 foot, but they have the rack. So that would be cutting it close as well, and for me to, I guess, go to my employer and say, "Can you give me another truck, because I can't drive this one home," is, in my personal opinion, is a tough thing to ask of him for already being, given the position that I've been given, because I've worked to get there, to be able to drive it home and, you know, so on and so forth. So maybe somewhere down the road, him and I can have the conversation and see what he thinks about it.
Well, I don't want you to put your job in jeopardy at all.
Right, and that's, right.
But the fact that your company is putting this on you is, is, and we've had this before, where guys will bring home too big a company truck, and, you know, the companies want them there.
Right.
But again, it doesn't follow the town laws, so, and the code, so you're, you're put between a rock and a hard spot. There's another alternative, and I just want to suggest it.
Yep.
In going by your property also.
Yep.
To the left of the carport, as you look at the carport, there's an area that you could, and you do have some bushes there, you'd have to remove them.
Yep.
But if you could back that van in next to the carport.
And it's, I'm almost, I'm smiling that you're saying... And I, it's, I'm almost, I'm smiling that you're saying that because just the other night, I was sitting outside with my wife, and I said, you know, if we took those two pine trees out, I could back that baby right in, out of sight, out of mind.
Right.
But I don't know how the code would be for me parking on the grass in my backyard. And I, you know, I don't...
Well, you'd have to...
Right.
Yeah.
Whether it's paver, you put, you'd pave it or put crusher down, stone down, that's an expense that I would have to, you know, sort of save up to do, which is a possibility. But in, in my personal opinion, I'm gonna be honest, that would look more tacky than a vehicle actually being in the driveway where a vehicle belongs.
I'm not saying you're wrong.
You know what I mean?
I'm not saying you're wrong.
Right.
Ultimately, like the chairman said.
Yep.
It would be nice if you could park it in the carport.
Right.
Or get a van that fits in the carport.
Right. Now, can I ask you guys a question? If you've seen the property, it's a double-wide driveway, now, what if I were to park the van, the truck, in tight to the house, to his, it's, it's closer to the house, the car would be parked on the side? Granted, you still see it visually, but it's not as, you know...
Right.
As much as it is in your face.
It's still not the right thing to do, but, um...
In terms of Mr. LaPerry's suggestion about a different-sized vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, under the, under the code, if your vehicle, if you get a smaller vehicle, that's, uh, less than seven and a half feet tall, or, or seven and a half, no more than seven and a half feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
And less than 20 feet long, and less than eight feet wide.
Yep.
Then you don't need a variance.
Right.
And it's okay.
And with, with the truck I have now, I meet two of them, but I'm too tall in the height. I'm a, it's a 12-foot, it's a 12-foot truck, seven and a half foot wide, but I think it's 10-foot tall, and that's where I, that's where I'm...
Well, then, because as I'm reading, well, it may be because you're, uh, it's a, it's a box...
Yeah, so it's, it's the, so there's, there's the use classifications, and then there's also just a general catch-all dimensionally, so I think he would still fall within the freight van or truck, even if he got a smaller vehicle, which are prohibited.
Oh, okay.
If he had a, you know, a Sprinter with a rack on the side, I still think that's a freight van.
Um, and the high-top Sprinter, yes.
Yeah.
You know, ultimately, a normal-sized van would, would be better off for you, even if it did have a rack on the side of it for glass, but, you know, ultimately, that would be the right size to put in there.
I have one point to bring up, and it had nothing to do with the size or where the carport is or anything.
Sure.
My question is, uh, when you put that truck in reverse.
Yep.
Is there an alarm that...
There is, it has a backup alarm, it does.
Okay, now, we've had requests like this before, and one of the complaints from people in the audience that live near there is they hear this alarm going off.
Really? Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Especially in the summer when the windows are open. In fact, I have one in my neighborhood, and one of these days, I'm gonna get up early enough to find out who that person is.
Sure.
But it's, they're not quiet, they beep, 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 beep.
Right, right.
At five o'clock in the morning, that can be extremely annoying.
That's why in the, in the afternoon, I back in, so it's later in the afternoon, I back in, you hear the noise, and in the morning, I just pull out very quietly and peacefully.
Being sensitive to that.
Yep.
Situation might be enough to solve the problem.
Okay.
Some people would just go ahead and do it.
Right.
And I don't know if there's a device that you can switch that thing off?
Uh, I'm not, you might be able to, but I believe it's a safety feature with that truck. And just like when you back up, you're supposed to toot the horn a couple times just to let little kids know or people know, I'm, you know, I'm pulling in my driveway, I'm backing into somewhere. So, that might go against New York State inspection kind of thing, unfortunately.
Well, I know a guy.
No, you're right, you're right. I appreciate, you know, every bit we can get, you know, and that's, my biggest thing is, is that as, you know, living in a community, is that we all want to live happy and be happy, go to work every day, support our families, and I happen to be in a position where I drive a work truck home, and, um, I, I don't want to be hurt in my career because of I can't drive a truck home, I guess is what I'm getting at, and I understand there's a rule in a code, but I, I would like it to be adaptable, or can we come up with some kind of conclusion that's fair, being that I have so many...
And I think, to your point, I think that's exactly what the board's trying to do, they're trying to balance the situation, and hear your concerns, obviously, but balance them against the town code to come up with a solution that might work for everyone.
Okay.
So, my, my question is, what about your circumstance would be different than any other person who comes up and says, my company gives me a truck that's too big, and it's part of my job, and I need a variance? Um, I mean, because our concern is, it's the precedent. Once we grant a variance for this, which is a billboard on a street corner, then if someone else asks for it, we might have, we'll have to grant it to them. And what about your circumstances different? Now, I know that in your, um, application, you say that you do late-night emergency services.
Yes.
Where you might have to enclose something.
Correct.
And we previously granted, I think, for the telephone company and the, um, Time Warner for cable, I think, um, but Time Warner came twice, and we said no for the second time.
Sure.
But what about your circumstances different than some other person who, like, for a plumbing company that might have to do midnight work?
Um, I, I think I would stress the biggest thing would be the emergency thing, the emergency boardups, um, and also having, um, having all my material and all my supplies in my vehicle, in my truck, with me, so I don't have to go and get it and, or, and/or load it up real quick before I go, it's all in the truck, just get in it and go, whereas I don't have to have it in the garage and load it up and leave, I can just get in my truck and go, if that's sort of what you're looking for, um...
I'm really not looking for anything, we just have to establish a record, we're just here to gather evidence.
On average, how many emergencies do you have, um, per month?
It can vary, the couple that we've had has been like Bill Gray's down in Seabreeze, um, maybe two or three every couple weeks, yeah, yeah, a month or so, maybe even a little more, it all depends on if it's a school, you know, if there's a school thing where you're going after hours for the kids, you can't be there where the kids are there. The biggest ones are the restaurants, any kind of restaurants, interior glass, door lights, people try to break in, pizza places, you know, um, so I would say three to four times a month, possibly a little more, probably a little more, um...
How many other people drive their vehicles home for the company?
Uh, there are, there's our two bosses, and then we have three foremans, the three foremans drive their, their company vehicles home, and the two bosses do, and then myself.
They the same as yours, or...
Uh, two of them are the same as mine, and then there's two vans with two racks, and then there's, um, one of the gentlemen drives an F-150 with two, like a double rack. Um, they don't all live in Arondacoit, they live in different townships, but, um...
There's no vehicles parked at the office at all?
Uh, there's like one or two, but they're able to pull those in because they're smaller. It's a smaller service van that they can pull right inside, where it's locked and safe and sound.
See, and that's, that's where part of the issue is, there's a smaller work van that fits in a garage there, but because it's a large van, that's the one you end up with now, it's, so if you could take one of those smaller vans home.
Mm-hmm.
You'd be okay.
Right.
You know, you could pull it into your carport.
Right.
Um, I mean, that's, ultimately, that would be the suggestion, to switch vehicles so you can pull it into the carport. The next question I have is, in the event we said no, and we gave you a few months, um, or so, or, you know, two or three months to raise the carport so that you could move, you know, you wouldn't, you could keep that van for the next few months at home until you made arrangements to fit it in underneath the carport or switch vehicles.
Right.
Um, so, would you, um, be acceptable, something like that?
Um, I would lean maybe more than just a couple months, maybe six to, six months to a year, all depending, you know, and, and I'll definitely talk to my employer and see what we can come up with, you know.
Does your employer know that you're having...
He does, um, he does know, he's aware of it, Frank Sapienza is his name, um, he's well aware of it, um...
Could I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
There's two alternatives at least that have been put out there tonight, one raising the carport, another one a smaller vehicle, and then there've been a few other suggestions as well. Rather than saying, well, let's do something and, and see what we might be able to accommodate you in, in the next six months or so, what, can you look into with your boss and somebody about what it would entail in terms of cost-wise and materials and how, whether it's feasible to, to raise the carport and come back next month, and then we'd have more specific information to deal with, both you and us, in trying to make a decision that can accommodate the interests of the town, the interests and your interests, your employer's interests, I'm really not one way or another, if they get accommodated, they get accommodated, if they don't, they don't, it's your interests and the town's interests.
Right.
That is our concern. Does that sound like something that you could, uh, work on and have more information for us?
Yes, I could definitely do that, um, yes.
All right, so if we postpone your, uh, case to, to our July meeting, then that's okay with you, right?
Yes.
And you can get us that information in the meantime?
Yep, I will work on that.
I think that'd be really helpful.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
If he were to switch vehicles or change, he wouldn't...
I was gonna ask that, if I were to go in and say, hey, Frank, what do you, can I switch vehicles?
Gives you a smaller van and you don't need the variance, then you just withdraw the case because it's no longer necessary.
Right, it's just, it's, I guess what's sort of tough to swallow is that I'd have to be spending money for me to go and make money.
Well...
In a sense, you know, and that's...
As Mr. Polino referenced, we, we have turned down somebody from Time Warner.
Right.
Uh, and their truck is no longer in their driveway, and they have to drive out to wherever it's parked, and that's because there really wasn't, it, it wasn't an accommodation based on the property or the, the owner's circumstances, it was Time Warner.
Right.
And the, we're not in it, you know, we're not here to accommodate Time Warner or Flower City Glass or Rochester, Frontier, or whoever else it, it may be. We're here to accommodate the, the residents of the town and look out for the interests of the town and balance those two, so...
Okay.
Uh, can you please keep it down in the, uh, audience, uh, it's hard for us to hear, and it's hard for the audio to pick up, thank you.
So, that's, you know, that's why we're asking.
And I, I will definitely, moving forward, work on it, and do I get back in touch with you guys, or just...
We'll just, we'll have it on our agenda in July.
Okay.
And if you have any more information that you want to give to us in advance, just go through Carrier, Donna, and...
Okay.
Or Michelle upstairs, and they'll get it all to us.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay?
I appreciate your time, yep, thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Good evening, um, my name is Byrow Rizvanovic, uh, 340 Harwick Road, I live across the street from Nicholas, and, uh, I already heard everything, and I see what are the options. I just want to let you know that they're very nice neighbors, their property's well-maintained, wish everyone was like them, um, I understand there's rules, um, here just to ask, if I, if you could at least give him a decent timeframe so he can get this under control.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That would be it.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application, step right up. If there's others that want to speak in favor, come on up and wait in the west aisle there.
Hello, Don Duncan, I live at 326 Harwick, um, I just want to say, Nick has done a great job with the property, he's improved it from the previous owner who was elderly and wasn't able to maintain. Everything he's done has been a benefit to the neighborhood, he's, you know, watches out for everyone in, in the area, both, both sides of the street, whether it's, uh, Shelford or Harwick, or, and so on. Um, I can see his truck from my front yard, it's not a big deal, it's set back, really, it's only on Shelford that you really notice it, or coming up the other way on Harwick. I do hope you give him time to rectify the situation, or grant him the variance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who wants to talk about commercial vehicles or things like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to the next case on the agenda.
ZB 1706-5, upon the made of request by Joseph Campo for a special use permit to continue to harbor six hens and three ducks with coop and pen pursuant to section 23570 of Town Code on premises 261 Hedgegarth Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, everybody, uh, Joseph Campo, I live at 261 Hedgegarth Drive.
You can raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
When my family and I first moved here nearly two years ago, we were aware that you were allowed to keep chickens in West Arondacoit, however, we were unaware of the special use permit, and I apologize for that. Uh, we initially got the chickens as pets for my daughter, because I'm allergic to 90% of domesticated animals. Uh, we've raised all of our hens since they were days old till the two-year-old, one-year-old, six-month-old mark they are now. Uh, they've become great companions, and each one has their own personality. Uh, there are many benefits to keeping chickens as pets, obviously, eggs being one of them, which we share with our friends, our families, and our neighbors, however, they give us much more than that, they keep our gardens bug-free without us having used pesticides, we recycle their waste as fertilizer, uh, they provide endless teachable moments for my daughter, uh, and they also help us keep our house zero food waste home. Uh, one of the articles I included for you guys, there are towns paying their residents to keep chickens in order to reduce the food waste and keep food out of their city dumps.
Well, one of the most interesting things that you submitted from my perspective was the, uh, ad from 1918 talking about how it was patriotic and a citizen's duty to keep two hens in the backyard.
I just found it very, I found it very weird how we went from a self-sustaining...
Ninety-nine years ago, it was unpatriotic for me not to have them in my backyard, apparently.
Right. Um, I'd like to bring up how well-cared-for they are, they're organically fed, they're played with every day, they get to free range every day in our fenced-in yard, uh, they have 150 square foot fully enclosed pen and coop, uh, which we secure every evening. Uh, additional security measurements we've taken to keep our girls safe is, uh, we surrounded the entire pen and coop with chicken wire and hardware cloth, we've also buried at least six inches down, uh, in the ground around the coop, the pen, the back fence itself since six inches down, hardware cloth to ward off any burrowing animals. Uh, with these measurements, we haven't had any losses due to predators in the two years we've had them. Uh, we've also never had any incident of escape or complaint from our neighbors over noise, smell, or activity. I have letters here today from both my neighbors residing directly next to me, uh, saying they don't have concerns with us keeping our hens, they haven't experienced any noise or odors coming from our property. Uh, that being said, I also like to bring up a lot of misconceptions or myths dealing with chickens, and the fact I have another 30 signatures of neighbors, residents, and friends that support us keeping the chickens, I don't know if you guys wanted to see these.
Hand that to Mr. Evans, and he'll pass it around.
Um, myth number one is chicken smell. Between their dust baths and their preenings, they're extremely clean animals, uh, five hens produce about five ounces of waste, which we use as fertilizer, your average dog produces about 12 ounces of waste, which you can't do anything with. Uh, these numbers I pulled from an article that Attorney Kathy Mormino wrote, because she was going through the same thing I am. Uh, myth number two is they hurt property values, and it's actually the opposite. Forbes put out a publication saying that of the top 10 appreciating housing markets, all 10 approve chicken keeping. Uh, myth number three is they're noisy, roosters are noisy, uh, hens are not, but even roosters are only half as noisy as your average barking dog or lawnmower, and I have all the decimal levels provided from Attorney Mormino. Um, four is chickens require a lot of land, uh, all major US cities, including New York City, Denver, Los Angeles, all permit chicken keeping with no acreage at all. Uh, myth number...
Rochester as well, right?
And Rochester as well.
Rochester doesn't have any restrictions on the chickens, they sell them at the public market.
Right. Um, myth number five is they attract rodents and predators, properly maintained coops and food do not attract rodents, a bird feeder dumping a half-bag of bird feed on the ground from squirrels every week attracts a lot more rodents than a properly maintained coop. Uh, us having chickens makes us much more conscious of predators, hence why we overbuild our coop the way that we have. Uh, the coop itself is more than 50 feet away from my, the closest point of my house, more than 70 feet away from the closest neighbor's house, and over 15 feet away from the closest property line, uh, which more than follows the Arondacoit accessory structure guidelines as well as Rochester's chicken regulations. I've given you guys all the survey map showing the location of my pen, to the yard, to my house, and everywhere else. Uh, while preparing for this, I came across several articles I've given to you guys, uh, one of them being from the Arondacoit Post itself, explaining the benefits of backyard chickens, many that I raised today. Uh, I've also brought with me a, a few other articles, a map showing, uh, just a handful Uh, I've also brought with me a, uh, few other articles, a map showing, uh, just a handful of the special use permits that you guys have handed out the last couple of years and they all surround my house. Uh, I've also brought videos, if you would like to see those. And I'd also like to let you guys know that the chickens are scheduled for their yearly checkup with Dr. Bolognick VII, so this Wednesday. I hope you see my application in good cause and grant your usual five-year permit with no replacements. I would also ask that you grant your usual three to fir, three to four bird per breed maximum at the end of the five-year term. I'd like to be able to keep four chickens and three ducks after my five-year term. Uh, thank you for your time and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You did explain a lot about the chickens, um, not as much about the ducks.
Right.
Obviously, um, we have granted ducks in the, in the yard, um, and they added chickens to it and there was a, there was a rat problem in that particular home or in that backyard. So, I guess the question is, do you have to have both the chickens and the ducks? How long have you had both of them?
Uh, we've had chickens for two years and the ducks were more of a pet for me and I got them this year. Um, I also have a duck crossing sign literally in my backyard on Titus for the pond that's across the street.
Your ducks, uh, um, are they, what do you, what do you do? Pin the, pin the, uh, wings so they can't fly?
They're domesticated ducks. They can't fly. They're called Indian runners, so they walk more like penguins and they're, they just can't fly.
Just a quick point of information. Uh, doesn't mean anything to anybody except that when you mentioned that you thought it was okay to have chickens in West Arondacoit?
Correct.
West Arondacoit is a school district. It's got nothing to do with the town rules. East and West Arondacoit are the town.
Okay, I, well, I live in West Arondacoit, so that's what I was trying to be specific to.
Because if there are people here from East Arondacoit who think, "Oh, I can raise chickens or I can't raise chickens." It doesn't matter. It's just the town.
Okay.
Thanks.
I would, um, note that you've signed, you've passed, uh, to us, uh, several sheets signed by neighbors. Bill Spitalia, 269 Hedgegarth Drive, Richard and Ruth Miller, 251 Hedgegarth. Michael Demont, 140 Glenmont. Keith McCullough, 232 Hedgegarth. And then a list that just have, uh, twenty-eight signatures on. And looks like you've only shared eggs with about half of those, according to the X's. And at least one of them you've opened the door with has said that you haven't shared, but they want you to share with them. So those, those signatures are all a part of the, uh, the hearing as well.
Yep.
All right? All right, is there, uh, any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hi, everyone. My name's Trish Campo. Um, I've had the privilege to interact with these birds on multiple occasions and I'm just always very impressed with how docile and domesticated they, they are. Um, I grew up on the west side of the city, so not much chicken exposure there, but I did have pets. And, you know, that's really what makes me in the most supportive of this is for this little one right here of all the learning opportunities and moral development they can provide for her as she grows up, especially since, you know, I grew up with her father, so I know, you know, we can't have any dogs or cats, so... If chickens is what it is, then let there be chickens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also see you're ready for the game tonight.
You state your address for me? Can you state your address for the record?
It's 8 Barris Lane.
Barris Lane.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak in app, oop? There we go.
Tell them your name. Tell them your name. Go ahead. Which one?
Uh, uh, I number 261 Hedgegarth Drive.
Tell them about your chickens.
Our chickens love us and, 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 and they never hurt us. They, they, they never pet us. They, they never pet us.
We pet them, yeah?
Yeah, we pet them. They're so sweet.
They're so sweet.
And they, and they love us too.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application?
Hi, Julie Geisler, 231 Hedgegarth Drive. Um, as a teacher, I understand the whole point of the learning, um, experience and all that. And I get that and I know in some schools they do do this as an opportunity. Um, but as a resident, I, my concern is rats. I have done some research on it and I have read that there are rats. I believe there's been other, um, communities that have had a rat infestation with this. Um, I know they're saying that they're keeping everything clean, but I have three children of my own, um, and we live in a suburban area. This, we're not in the country. This is just, I, I feel that, um, very strongly. I do not want rats in my neighborhood. I pay good money to live here and I don't want to deal with rats.
Well, with, with respect to the issue of rats, have you, I mean, we, what I understanding is that the, the chickens have been there for two years. Have you seen any rats or had any evidence of rats in the neighborhood in the last two years?
I have not, but...
And the, one of the conditions, this, what, and I, I guess perhaps I should have made this clear at the outset. We deal with a number of different things here. One of them is use variances, area variances, but this falls in the category of a special use permit. And a special use permit is a different animal than a variance. A variance is an exception from what the town board has said are the rules for property districts in the town. A special use permit is a determination by the town that the things that can be the subject of a special use permit are okay in the town, but not just as a blanket rule. And in order to fit what is deemed by the board to be okay into the specific neighborhood and the specific property, they put us in charge of determining what, if any, conditions need to be imposed in order to make that a better fit than just a blanket rule that says it's okay to have chickens. So we start with the premise that the town board has determined that having chickens and ducks and, uh, I believe it even includes miniature horses and goats and other kinds of animals, uh, is okay. And it's up to us to determine what precautions or conditions need to be put in place to protect the neighbors. In the instance that Mr. Polino referenced earlier, where there was an inf, uh, an, an infestation of some rats, we required them to get an exterminator to come in, put in together a plan. And according to the neighbor that had, uh, indicated that there was an issue, that resolved the issue. Now, whether those rats were attracted...
I just don't want them.
No, no, no. And, and I understand that.
I want to prevent that from happening. I don't, you know...
But what, you know, if, if what you're saying is I don't want rats, therefore don't allow chickens at this property. What I'm saying to you is the town board has said chickens in Arondacoit are okay. It's up to the zoning board to determine what conditions. And one of the con, there are several conditions that we've put in place when we've granted these. One is that the animals have to be examined by a veterinarian every year and proof that they're healthy and aren't sick has to be provided to the town. Another is that the town have, excuse me, the town has to go out and inspect the, uh, the property and make sure that there is no sign of any infestation and that there's no signs of rodents or, uh, predators being attracted to the site, that it's being kept clean the way it is and report back to us every year on what they find. Another one is that we only limit it to a certain number and we limit it to a certain amount of time so that neighbors such as yourself, if there is a problem, have ample opportunity. We haven't heard of any problems other than that one and no one can tell us that that one was because of the ducks or the chickens or because of other circumstances that existed in the neighborhood. And it didn't manifest itself in a widespread, uh, you know, infestation of rats. It was very localized and may have been due to something completely different than that. Uh, the exterminator didn't draw any direct connection between the ducks, the chickens and the rats, but they, they were all there at the same time, so we made sure that the rats got rid of. 'Cause we don't want rats in the town of Arondacoit either. Uh, none of us do. And, you know, so I, I wa, I just wanted to make it clear to you that it's not, the issue isn't whether it's chickens are allowed or not. The town board has already made that determination. It's up to us to impose the conditions and the condition of any infestation, if there's any, uh, indication that there's any, uh, problem with rats, we need, would like to know that right away and we'll make sure that we do whatever can be done. But part of the conditions that we impose, uh, on these when we've granted them, and we haven't granted every one, but part of the conditions that we impose when we have granted them in the past have been intended to directly address that concern. So I wanted you to understand that that is in our mind and that is part of the reason for the conditions.
How often do they get checked? Do you go, do you go out to the home and inspect?
We require the town to go out within a year and report back to us. That way they get the full flavor of the neighbors and everything else. We've gone out, uh, and in response to, if there's a specific complaint, the town will go out, you know, within a relatively short period of time to follow up on it and check on it. We've checked on noise levels ourselves, sitting at fences in the morning for a half hour, forty-five minutes, waiting to see if we can hear, uh, the chickens and the hens from the backyard while we listen to the dogs from, uh, the other, uh, houses on the street and things like that. So we're not insensitive to that, other than your concern about rats.
No, I just, that's...
Is there any other issue?
That, that's my only issue.
Not to minimize that, that's a big concern.
No, and I, I appreciate that, you know, they are keeping it, um, clean and making sure that it is being, you know, not attracting these animals, but if anything, if I do see anything, I will be sure to, to call.
Get on the phone right away.
I will. I do not want rats.
None of us do. Thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about chickens or hens or ducks?
I could go on all day.
Uh, hang on. All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case on the agenda.
ZB, ZB 1702-1, upon the made of request by Tom Mattel for an area, for area variances to construct a two-story addition on an existing garage with less than required front step-back on a through-lot in exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 3653 St. Paul Boulevard in R1 Residential District.
Okay, my name is Tom Mattel from 3653 St. Paul Boulevard.
Kaylee Mattel from 3653 St. Paul Boulevard.
If you'd raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm a musician of twenty years. It's been my dream to build a personal music studio, um, for, for recording in a practice area. And so my wish was to build a second floor addition on my garage in order to attain that space. I have studied proper acoustic engineering principles to ensure proper acoustic isolation from my neighborhood. Um, I originally had considered, uh, my basement as a space, but due to ceiling heights and the, um, headroom that you need to be able to build, uh, a, a proper acoustically isolated space, which requires you build a room inside of a, a room, essentially decoupled from the existing structure. Uh, there's not enough headroom in the basement to attain that. Um, I do believe that, uh, this addition on my garage will also improve the neighborhood aesthetic through matching of, uh, roof lines, uh, roof style to my existing house with a Gambrell-style roof. And it will not change the existing footprint of the garage, um, aside from a staircase going to the second floor. I have attained signatures of my three, uh, closest neighbors that they have no issues with this.
You, you indicate that there's not going to be a bathroom or anything in there.
There will be no running water or a bathroom, correct?
But in the sheet that's labeled camera one, it looks to me like there's a little room off to the east side. I think that's a doorway.
Yep.
What, what's that gonna be?
So that's a, um, an isolation room. So there's gonna be two rooms, uh, an isolation room and then a storage room. Isolation room will be for vocal recording so that a full band can, uh, play in the main room while a, a vocalist or some other musician can be recording, uh, without that noise bleeding into the other room.
And, but my understanding is that the purpose of this is for your personal use and not for any, um, commercial use, correct?
That is correct.
So if someone was in there singing and a band was outside, that'd be something that you'd be doing for friends or something, not for...
Yeah, sure. So I have, I have a few bands around town that, uh, would, you know, be for personal recording use, for, for my own bands.
Okay.
Bands that he's in?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that, 'cause I was a little concerned when I saw the second room and wasn't sure what that was gonna be.
Your garage is on Fairview Crescent though, really facing.
Correct, yep.
And it's real close to the road.
That's right.
But you should have put the sign on St. Paul Street, so when you're driving by, it's a very busy street and not seeing the sign. I drove around a couple of times until I found it and I went around the corner, so it's, it's...
So I could understand, I could understand that. The reason I actually put that is, is it's, it's hard to see my garage from St. Paul, so I felt that the addition would affect them less than those on Fairview Crescent. Yeah, so...
Just for the record, I would note that we have, uh, uh, you've given us a sheet signed by neighbors at 3665 St. Paul, 3671 St. Paul and 3635, indicating that they're all in favor of your application. How about your neighbors on Fairview? Any of them, did you talk to any of them about it or any of them express any concerns?
Um, nope. So, uh, so Ray is in, in the, uh, in the group here and we talked to him and, um, but, uh, nope. Everybody said, "Yeah, I mean, it seems like a reasonable use case, um, as long as parking won't be an issue," um, which won't change, uh, the existing parking conditions that are, that exist today, that they don't see any, uh, and then as long as, uh, you know, um, the noise pollution doesn't change from what it is today.
And my understanding is the whole concept of it is that you wouldn't be able to tell outside that...
Exactly.
Jamming away inside, right?
You got it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I got, just the more that you describe it, the more it sounds like a business. So this would be zero commercial, commercial use?
Zero commercial.
No cutting of, uh, CD for later on or whatever young kids do these days.
No, this is purely for, for my own, for bands that I am, uh, personally in.
That kinda sounds like that's your business though. You're, right?
I, I wish it was, but it's, I don't, I, I think it's doubtful.
No, he's a full-time, um, sales engineer.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm a engineer by trade.
Okay.
And it's gonna stay that way.
If she's got anything to say about it, it will stay that way.
Unless he gets a top forty hit.
Then we can be concerned.
Then we'll probably, yeah, move the recording studio to somewhere else.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up, sir. I may have moved too fast for you, but you're the only one who raised your hand, so tell us what you have to say.
Well, I'm very clam out of the 57 Fairview Crescent and yesterday I just happened to, uh, to Tom and he explained what he was gonna do. I didn't sign it, but, uh, having come tonight, I, I have no problem. I think his request is reasonable and, uh, I have no objection to it.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in relation to this application? Step right up, sir.
Richard Barone, 154 Alwood Drive. I've been involved with audio and building audio systems for about sixty years and I'm just wondering if the board has the following information. One, the acoustical treatment he's using in the walls and also the windows, which of course should be double paying. Also, is he using amplification, amplification on the musical instruments when he practices for his personal use? Has he indicated to you the kind of decibels that will be used? Especially those frequencies will permeate any kind of wall. And if you heard cars along the roadway at times, you wonder why the bass is so loud. What happens is the bass inside the car gets the skin of the car to vibrate and become, quote, "a speaker." So it actually becomes very loud. So too with a wall in a house. Yeah, I don't know what kind of instruments he uses. Uh, some instruments do... Some instruments do not produce much bass. Some instruments produce a lot of bass. Even guitar can be a very low bass sound, of course drums. So I'm just wondering whether or not, if you have that information in the record. I didn't get a chance to look at his application that was submitted to the town, but if you don't have it in the record, perhaps you may ask him those questions. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in relation to this application? Mr. Mintel, would you like to address the concerns that were just raised?
Just before you do that, question for counsel. If a resident were to think or were to hear noise from the music and think that it was too loud, they could call the police and the police could instruct the applicant. If the noise is in fact too loud and violated some law, those laws would still apply whether or not...
Correct. Your respect on whether or not these variances are granted. And I was going to suggest after the applicant answers that you're not being necessarily asked to approve a use this evening. While the use is certainly driving the request, you're being asked to approve relief from the dimensional requirements of the code.
And the dimensional requirements have to do with the fact that the current garage is built essentially on the side of the road, so the setback there...
Correct.
Has to do with the location there. And then in terms of the height, part of it is the relation to the main structure, which is relatively high.
Correct.
So an increase in size of the garage in connection with the size of the main structure and resulting houses would not change the exterior, the way that the exterior, I guess, view is for the rest of the neighborhood, and that's separate from the internal use of the structure.
Absolutely.
And we could also impose a condition that it be constructed in accordance with accepted acoustical, things that the town would check into as part of the permit?
Yeah, I mean, I would just suggest that you have a standard condition that says that any use that the structure will be put to complies with the requirements of the town code.
Okay, all right. But if you could provide us that information?
Sure, sir. So for the, for the, in the case of the windows, the windows will be essentially a window on the exterior wall, but for the, as I said, you're sort of building a room within a room. And so the windows on the exterior wall will face another wall in the inside. So it'll sort of be a fake window, for lack of a better term. The use of double-studded wall construction, you know, typically gets isolation ranges between twenty to thirty decibels. So that would be the intended construction methodology.
And the type of instrumentation that you'd be using would...
So it would range from drums, bass, guitar, vocals. So I'd say the bass would be the lowest frequency range. Certainly bass permeation is a concern in any structure, but we believe that through my studies in acoustic engineering that we should be able to limit those to a degree that's acceptable to the neighbors.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. We'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to the next case on our agenda.
ZB seventeen oh six dash seven, upon the matter of request by McMahon LaRue Associates, acting as agent for Lee and Kelly Rust, for area variances to construct an accessory structure with less than required front setback, street side, and side setback on premises thirteen fourteen Bay Shore Boulevard in R2 Residential District.
Good evening. Change this up on you. I'm Randy Peacock. I'm the architect. Greg McMahon is here with me tonight and my client Lee Rust is also here. My address is seventy Linden Oaks, Suite 110.
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
The Rusts have owned this property for many years. In fact, the town granted them a variance to construct a garage approximately where their current requested structure was about twelve years ago. They actually began the renovation of that building at that time and due to some unfortunate circumstances, it was never completed. We're currently in the process of putting together a plan to renovate the house, make it habitable again, expand it slightly. And one piece of that is what we call the tram house. The Rusts have a medically fragile daughter who will be living in the house with them. Because of the grade difference between the street and the location of the house, they had a tramway installed along the side of the property. It was done with permits and through the town. That tramway comes up to the street on the south side of the property. They, their daughter needs to be transported in wheelchair to and from the house to appointments and various other outings that she goes to. The intent is to have a small structure at the top of the tramway where she can be out of the wind in the process of waiting for transportation to arrive, moving in or out of that, of the tram. It also serves as a way of protecting the actual tram structure itself. So what we're asking for tonight is a variance to front setback of point five feet from the right-of-way line of Bay Shore Boulevard and a side yard setback of one point five feet instead of required four feet. And I apologize, thirty feet is the required setback from the, from the right-of-way at Bay Shore Boulevard. We also noted that this is a structure that we believe the front of the house is actually the bay side according to the town code rather than Bay Shore. So we can have the accessory structure because it's in a rear yard. We do not believe that this will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood immediately to the north of this structure of where the structure will be placed. There is currently a garage which extends probably seven or eight feet into the right-of-way. That Bay Shore Boulevard right-of-way either was moved or was not properly surveyed at some point in the past. So there are numerous structures that have garages and accessory buildings that are built either right on the property line or lapping over it. This is the only place we can build this. That's where the tramway ends now. And once the tramway is made operational again, the house has to cover the end of the tramway and that's why it's designed or intended to be where it is now.
Say, it didn't look like it had been used in a number of years.
It has not been used. As I mentioned, there were some circumstances that occurred. Unfortunately, the company that originally built the tramway has gone out of business. They're in the process of looking for somebody to recertify it so that it can be used again now. And there was a significant investment made in installing it. We believe it's still functional, but it's got to be inspected and certified again for use. I think that pretty much covers the facts there and if I can answer any questions.
This would also facilitate the delivery to the property and the removal from the property of other things besides their daughter.
Absolutely. It can be used for other things as well. I mean, those other things can also happen on the stairs.
Most of the other properties along that portion of Bay Shore Boulevard that I'm familiar with have some sort of a mechanism for lowering groceries and things like that to the level where the house is from the level where the street is. Some of it is stairs, but I know there's other mechanical means.
This is the only tramway I know about. Lee may know of others, but certainly. Part of this project will also involve restoring stairs or building new stairs down to the, down to the house. The stairs are moved by frost and overgrown, so those will be upgraded as well. But, you know, certainly groceries, materials, et cetera, can go up and down the stairs without any problem. It's very difficult to bring a wheelchair up and down the stairs.
The garage that was approved, you said about twelve years ago?
Yep, yes.
Is there an intention to do the garage?
No, there's no intent to do a garage at this point. This is the only structure we want to build. It's approximately fifteen-nine by sixteen-six. A good third of it is actually just open, like a deck area where there's a covered ramp that comes up. The inside, there's enough room for the tram car and space to load and unload and windows to see out for when the transportation arrives.
Is, in the event that they need a driveway and the parking is the gravel, gravel part right out, it's going to be right out in front of?
There's some gravel parking areas, yes, right beside that.
And where would the garage go in the event you came back for a garage?
Well, there's no intention to come back for a garage at this point, so we have not actually laid out or planned a garage. The Rusts have determined that they can use the house. They're only going to use it seasonally. It's not going to be a year-round structure. So there's no intent at this point to build a garage.
Okay.
One of the drawings shows a water main or a water service going into the property. Is that building going to be constructed over the water service?
The building, it probably will be constructed over the water service. It's a, just a post structure. It's essentially built like a deck. It doesn't have a solid foundation wall underneath it, so we can straddle that water service.
Okay, all right, so they can access it if they have to make repairs or whatever.
Absolutely, yep.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Move on to the next case on our agenda.
ZB seventeen oh six dash eight, upon the matter of request by Pastor Row Associates, acting as agent for North American Stone, for area variances to construct a building addition with less than required rear setback exceeding maximum allowable lot coverage and with less than required parking on premises thirteen fifty-eight East Ridge Road in a C Business District.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Matthew Moore from Pastor Row Associates here on behalf of our client, National American Stone, North American Stone, sorry.
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Our client has come forward to town to ask for permission to build a building addition, the third addition, or the second addition, I guess, the third component of their structure at thirteen fifty-eight Ridge Road. Currently at the north end of the site, there is a stone outdoor storage area. And the intent of this addition is just to build essentially a warehouse to store all that material indoors outside of the element. We went to the planning board last week and received approval from them, or two weeks ago, sorry. So we have the planning board approval. And in doing this, we will require three variances from this board. The first variance being a rear setback. Allowable in code is sixty foot from the rear property line. We're proposing a fifty-eight foot and one quarter rear setback. On the plans I believe that you have, it's showing fifty-six foot and a quarter rear setback, but at the request of the planning board, we shorten the building by two feet so that the entire addition is on the C Business District instead of going over that district line that kind of intersects our property. So that setback would be approximately fifty-eight feet instead of the sixty required. The next would be the lot coverage. Allowable in code is thirty-three point three percent. The building addition is going to push us just slightly over that to thirty-six point six percent total. The size of this warehouse, for lack of a better word, is essentially the same size as the existing outdoor storage. We're just replacing that with a covered warehouse. So there's going to be no change to impervious area for drainage purposes. And finally, we're requesting a parking variance per the code. We're required to have twenty-one spaces, but we are requesting that the nine that are currently there be allowed to exist. Since the building, the addition is only going to be used for storage, there's going to be no change of use. Everything that's onsite will still be there, same number of employees, same number of potential walk-in customers. There's going to be no change whatsoever, so we're...
Do you know how long the nine spaces have been there?
Um, since the last addition was done several years ago. But there's never been any issue with parking on the property.
Approximately how many years ago was that?
I don't, I don't off the top of my head. I think five, six years ago. It was a good couple of years ago.
So it's been a number of years that the parking spaces have been adequate?
Mm-hmm, correct. And like I said, it's just, this is just a storage area, the addition. There's no new employees, no need essentially for more parking. So with that said, I'll open up questions to the board.
I've got a couple. Your letter says, talks about code requirement of twenty-one spaces, but the application from, I think, the staff's help says that only eighteen are needed?
It should be the twenty-one, correct. It must have just been an error on the application. It should be twenty-one that are required.
So if you're required twenty-one and you're only going to have nine, you're looking for more, a greater variance than what it...
Twelve.
Twelve variants instead of nine, right?
I think we spoke with Jess to explain that there was a few less, because you added a little few extra things that you didn't have to. So we did agree it was eighteen. It's to your benefit.
Oh, okay, sorry. Jess didn't inform me of that, so I guess it would be eighteen. I apologize.
The application's correct or the letter?
So the application form is accurate.
Right, and we discussed it with them and they said...
We're looking for a variance with nine spaces. Now, you said that the setback is going to be fifty-eight feet now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a district line that crosses the property and the planning board asked us to shorten the building up slightly, two feet, so that we're all on the C Business District.
We have the updated drawings that show it.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone that'd like to talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. You're welcome. Thank you. The, is there a motion to take the four-twenty-three and four-nineteen lakefront applications that were tabled earlier off the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we'll now consider that application. Anyone here to address that application?
Oh. My name is John Kishani. Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
And you live where? What's your address?
I live at eight ninety-three DeWitt Road in Webster.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. I understand this was the subject of a public hearing a month or two ago, correct?
April third, correct.
Yes, and a number of your neighbors spoke at the hearing and the board tabled it so we could get some more information and you're here to provide us with that, correct?
Took the words right out of my mouth. The board was justifiable in, you know, delaying and tabling a decision on April third. And it gave me a chance to meet with several of the neighbors and discuss other options and ideas. And, you know, it took about a month and I think we had come to a pretty good idea, but just a matter of a couple of days prior to the previous zoning board meeting, one of the neighbors who had somewhat of a financial commitment to the agreement backed out. And I tried to get back on the agenda, but it was too late and so I missed your last meeting. So I'm here tonight and as I said, I do feel it was justifiable because, you know, there wasn't enough information and, you know, there were some concerns from the neighbors. And maybe tonight, if you'll just give me a few moments, I can answer any more questions, but I've put together a packet and if, you may have some, is it, would you pass it along? I have five. I don't know if that's appropriate, but if I don't have enough, maybe someone could share.
Will share.
As we're passing that out, I just, a few points is, you know, something I didn't maybe make very clear initially. Most every single house in this Madison Terrace, Delta Terrace, or several of these streets, I believe most every single house as it exists would require variances in order to exist today. On the same token, many houses have been rebuilt or repurposed and, you know, undoubtedly they would require variances as well. I understand, you know, some people will take half of their house down or leave one wall up and there are certain advantages to doing that. I'm not here trying to do that. I feel that if somebody's going to build a new home... I feel that if somebody's going to build a new home, they should start with the foundation first and build a proper home. So with that being said, maybe I'll just go through this. The pictures will tell the story and I can answer any questions. On the first page, I have a picture of 423 Lakefront. This is a home that I own. And as you could tell, that, I provided a survey at one point that indicated that that house is built right up to the lot line. In fact, the overhang extends over the neighbor's property. The neighbor felt compelled to put up a six-foot privacy fence right up against the house and underneath the eaves. And there's actually windows that existed that had bedrooms that would make it impossible to leave. You know, this is kind of a mess, this situation here. The next page is another home I own next door, 419. That also would be proposed to be demolished and repurposed into a new home. The next page you'll turn, you'll see, this is the exact survey blueprint, site plan that was offered last time. Unfortunately, I didn't do a very good job outlining the actual house area. More importantly, the driveway. There was some concern at the last meeting that the driveway appeared to be some sort of a overzealous parking lot. And so by penciling in the driveway area, you could see that would look like any other driveway in town that's shared by two people. And at this point, I might mention too, that this concept is taking three building lots, two of which are landlocked lots, and repurposing these into two lots only. So we're going to lose one lot. We're going to have no more landlocked lots, which today do exist. I believe it'll require going to the planning board to re-subdivide the lot on Delta Terrace so that half of the lot can belong to one of the homes and the other half of the lot can belong to the other home. In an effort to keep more green space, I'm proposing a common driveway, which hopefully that would be allowed. I took a few pictures of just some houses in the neighborhood because this board was confronted by concerned neighbors stating that the home that I was proposing was out of character of the neighborhood. In fact, one gentleman said it was obvious it looked like the Holiday Inn. So I thought, let me take some pictures of the neighborhood and then let the board decide for themselves if the home that I brought for proposal would fit in with the neighborhood. So I labeled on the bottom right the addresses. So the first house is 77 Madison Street. Another one next is 60 Madison Street. Another home is 44 Madison Street. And if you look at the right-hand corner next to the vehicle on 44 Madison Street, that is one of probably over a dozen zombie houses that are in this neighborhood. It seems like this neighborhood is infested with houses that are vacant and abandoned. But I didn't really, initially purposely picked that out, but that's what's in the neighborhood quite a bit. I have number 20 Madison, nice house, fits in character. 41 Madison, two-story, probably at least 24 feet wide, which is what I was proposing. Now, I'm on Delta Terrace. This is the very same street that my private drive proposes to come off of. You know, rather wide house, much wider than what I'm proposing. In fact, it looks like the whole front yard is all blacktop. This appears to be a parking lot, certainly not what I was proposing to this board. We have 35 Delta Terrace, another nice two-story home. Number seven, Delta Terrace, another nice two-story home. And then lastly, this is the picture that I brought to you of the 24-foot wide house that I brought to you on April 3rd. And that's it. I hope that those pictures can tell just a little bit more. I think the last thing I might mention about this property, because some of the discussion I heard was, it was just a little bit too much house for the area or for the property. And I calculated, I actually paid tax on five individual lots over here. And total square footage comes out to in excess of 37,000 square feet, which is .85 of an acre. I interpolated back to .85 of an acre, or 37,000 square feet. And I found that nine houses on Delta Terrace where I am... 37,000 square feet supports nine houses on Delta Terrace. I'm here today asking for two houses. And I hope I was clear with how I explained that. Obviously...
Yeah, I think that was clear. I just, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The percentages that are on your application, because one of the issues is lot coverage, percentage of lot coverage. Those numbers, would those numbers change if you went to the planning board and re-divided, re-subdivided the lot? If it went from three parcels to two parcels, in theory, those two parcels would have more land, therefore the coverage would be less.
That's correct. And so the order of operation of seeking the zoning board's review and approval first before planning board, subdivision wouldn't happen unless what's being proposed is allowed to move forward.
If subdivision were allowed, would the lot coverage still be an issue?
Well, we'd have to calculate it. And the map that would be generated as part of the subdivision or re-subdivision plan that would be presented to the planning board would help to document that. I certainly can, we can sort of do a quick estimate based on the building footprint, but without having any exact measurement. So this board could make a conditional approval and indicate that the lot coverage, if needed, would be, could consider it as conditional. In other words, it may not be needed once the lots are re-subdivided.
Okay. I think that a quick estimate would be better than no estimate because if, after a re-subdivision, instead of needing a 30% variance, you need a 10% variance, that would be something that I think would be relevant to this board's consideration of this application.
We can certainly calculate that during the break.
Alright, thanks.
Following up on that, Carrie, were the calculations on the application made based with driveways? Because the driveway's going to impact it.
So the driveway doesn't get counted toward lot coverage. It's the buildings and accessory structures that counts toward. It's not impervious surface. It's buildings and structures. So the one thing I would point out is what may or may not have been contemplated in the application and certainly would want to be addressed by this board would be the zero setback on the portions on each of the side lot lines that would front on Delta because our code requires a two-foot setback from the driveway edge. And so when you're going to do a shared drive like this, you just need to, for each 419 and 423, to reflect that there's a zero setback on the portion of the lot where it would be sharing with the adjacent. So that'd be the one thing to, just to add as to part of the decision-making.
She answered the question, thanks.
It was a very good question. And quite frankly, I don't know if this is applicable or not, but there's also these two waterfront lots. And it's my understanding you will not allow me to attach that lot through any re-subdividing. But there is an awful lot of acreage. In fact, I'm thinking about the chickens right now because of the size of the land over here. Will that be another meeting, I suppose?
Yeah, yes, it will.
No, I'm only trying...
I have a question for you about your driveways. In the original applications, you looked like you had a turnaround spot backing out of the driveways in the southwest corner. And in this new drawing, you eliminated that backup spot.
This is the identical drawing. Now, I don't know if I did any freehanding or anything in that first, but this is the plan that was done by Warren McGrell Engineers and stamped by them.
This one.
Was that...
This is the one we've got in our packet today.
Right.
However, the two from before showed a large, actually showed the driveway right up against the lot line, right up, and then also showed like a turning spot.
Okay.
Which is not shown in this.
Yeah, I think that first one, sir, is a tax map that I just did some freehanding on.
Okay, alright, alright.
So there wouldn't be a turnaround spot?
I'm not proposing a turnaround spot. But I'm sure there'll be some common access agreement between the neighbors, which the town is more than glad to be involved with. Any common access agreement that gets added to the abstracts of either of these two properties. But essentially, it's just to allow each other to use the same amount of each other's land for ingress and egress.
The reason I asked it is there was one neighbor that had the impervious, was worried about drainage. And in this one, you're showing a lot more green space with less pavement. And in this one, you'd, more pavement.
Yeah. And thus the confusion two months ago, I'm sure.
Well, it didn't help.
I agree.
But your proposed building's going to conform to the McGrell drawing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Do we need to have, didn't we have one property, we had a common driveway and you had to put a divider, excuse me, a divider down the center? Down on the flats, if I remember correctly?
No, we had a, we had a common property down in the flats where they had originally proposed a divider that took care of the setback requirement. And then they eliminated the divider, eliminating the setback. And we had to go over it a second time and we did something with it.
Yeah, the driveway was constructed without the separation.
So this is, this is the opposite. This is, has no separator in it. And presumably will be built with no separator in it.
Now, if it would please this board, or the planning board, or the town staff, there's more than adequate room on this area to create two driveways. I believe you require 15 feet minimum for a driveway?
I would have to check the code for the driveway width requirement myself. That's not one I have committed to memory. But I just, we are very aware of the setback requirement. However, common drives have been approved in previous site plan and subdivision approvals by the town. So that there's precedent, there's certainly examples of both approaches.
Well, I'd be willing to go with whatever the town staff desired for driveway access to either of these two houses. The benefit to the town here tonight is that those two houses will, if given the variances, have access to the road. Today, they don't. There's a five-foot common pedestrian pathway where people park their car on Delta Terrace and walk to these two houses. And so I think that's probably our greatest benefit leaving tonight if the board gives the variances that this, you know, can occur.
How wide is the driveway that you've got? Because you can't read this print here.
You know, to scale, that's 20 feet. However, 17 feet is more than adequate for two cars to pass on a private drive.
But that, it's drawn as 20 feet?
It's drawn as 20. I don't see it being more than 17.
Right, I mean, 20's fine with me. I just wanted, I just wanted to know.
The only issue for us is the fact that it's a combined driveway and there's no setback between the two of them. The width is not something presently before us.
Can you just, I'm looking at the pictures, trying to figure out, is 419 east or west of 423?
419 is west toward the river.
These houses aren't occupied right now, are they?
No, sir, they haven't been occupied for probably, well, 423 has not been occupied for as long as I've ever been involved in this. And this was an unfortunate circumstance where I happen to be a bank in this situation. And I'm your responsible bank that understands the town doesn't like these kind of houses where there's a foreclosure, default on mortgages. I'm the one that's being proactive, aggressively seeking the variances to allow me to tear these down and repurpose these two nice lots.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
If I remember right, you're going to, you want to build these houses and then sell them? Or unless you're thinking of being a landlord. But I thought you said you weren't interested in renting them. But just tear them down, build new, sell them.
I'm not even sure I want to build them new. I have been a home builder for many, many years. I'm not even really too interested in building the homes. I do want to repurpose them. Currently, I'm talking to a few neighbors that have, they live in that neighborhood. They'd like to have a lot for themselves or for their children. One gentleman lives over on Rock Beach Road. He would build a house for his daughter. There's no requirement that says I have to build the house. All I want to do is put these properties on a tax roll and have families living in the houses. I can assure you, I have no interest in putting this kind of money into this process and using these as rental properties. And I know the board was told that was the intent, but that was not correct.
One other question. In the event you got approvals, you were planning on almost immediately tearing down the two houses. Are you still planning on doing that?
Absolutely, yes. That's always been...
Trying to sell off the project?
No, no.
And let the next person do it?
No, the town actually has been very gracious with me. And had, the town board had a town resolution to take down 423 because the previous owner did not do the repairs and bring it up to code the way the town wanted. Their resolution demanded it be torn down. And that's about when I stepped in and said, hold on, don't tear it down. You know, I'll take on the burden and the cost of tearing it down. Don't let the town have to do that. And I like to believe that two new homes will be there, you know, hopefully in a short time. And...
You're going to take them down and then try to find some builders or some people that are interested in the, in the plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about subdividing, tearing down houses? Anything like that that has to do with this? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. And we will now take a, no, we're going to do, we're going to take the break after we do, as I announced at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to deliberate and make decisions on the cases that we've heard thus far. Most of the people are still here, which proves that I was correct, that most of you are here on Densmore Road after we've decided the cases that we've heard so far. We will then take a short break. And then we will have the hearing with respect to Densmore Road, or continue that hearing. And then we will deliberate and make a determination with respect to that application. So the first, and we normally take them in the order in which they appear on the agenda and as to which the applicants are still present. So is Representative still present for 309 Bayfront Lane North? Yes, okay. We'll hear you first in a minute then. How about 407 Sagamore Drive? Yes? 359 Harwick Road? We've turned, that's right, that's been adjourned to July. 261 Hedgegarth? 3653 St. Paul? 1314 Bay Shore? 1358 East Ridge Road? 419 and 423 Lake Shore? Or, not Lake Shore, Lakefront? Are you staying around for the deliberations or no? Alright, then we'll put you in that pile. Alright. So, is there an application? I've got to get my paperwork. I gotta get my paperwork together here. Oh, I have it. Is there an application, or a motion with respect to 309 Bayfront Lane North, which is a type-two action for secret purposes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the area variance in related to, in relation to the setbacks on these two decks that were replaced. From what I understand, it, not necessarily the homeowner's fault, I guess it, it was a little bit miscommunication. However, based on that, knowing that the variance is only two feet difference, although it does say 10 feet on the, on the application.
Because the existing, the existing deck was out of compliance.
The, oh, the existing deck?
It was interesting, we looked at the original map, and it looked like they lost land, because we saw an old map, that it was a bigger setback, so over time, a newer map showed less land, and suddenly that became a nonconformity.
Okay.
So, interesting.
That being said, I guess the variance is 10 feet now instead of just two feet, that they only made it two feet larger than the old deck. So, it's not going to hurt the character of the neighborhood, actually, it's going to help the character of the neighborhood, because the old deck was falling apart. Alternative Solutions is telling them to take the thing down, which it is quite an elaborate deck, and I don't think that's a good alternative solution. Again, it is not a substantial variance, in my opinion, compared to the previous deck, it's only two feet extended toward the water. It is not an environmental concern unless the water level goes up any higher, which I hope it does, I hope and pray it does not go up any higher. And it is a self-created, it is not really a self-created issue, because the old deck was dilapidated and needed to be built new because it was a danger. Based on that criteria, I think we should approve this.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'd like to add that the DEC has received an application from them, because they had to, because they're in the buffer area, and I believe that that, that was issued.
Okay.
Okay.
But ours, ours is not subject to the DEC, right? We don't have to make it subject?
Right, we won't give a permit without the DEC approval.
Okay.
Even though we did.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think Mr. Chairman, this is already built, right?
Yes.
It is.
So in a sense, we're basically rubber stamping what exists.
We're rubber stamping what exists that was erected with a permit, and at least two inspections from the town, yeah.
Yep. To get that point in there, that's...
Oh, yes. It was now that...
That brings up a good point, that, you know, we don't always approve something that's been done prior to, and then, and then ask for forgiveness. In this particular situation, part of it was our own problem, so, but again, I don't believe it's a sizable variance anyways, so.
Any other discussion or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and the board is all present tonight. Next matter to be determined is 407 Sagamore Drive. Again, this is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion, then, that we grant the variance, but allow the fence on the north side to come to the north edge of the chimney, and not all the way up to the north end of the front of the house, in order to soften the wall that might otherwise appear visually, if it was going straight across, especially since it's a double lot. With respect to the issues pertaining to a practical hardship for an area variance, it will not change the character of the neighborhood significantly, since it's going to be set back a little bit from the front. It is, it is a double lot, and in order for the applicant to be able to make the maximal use for personal use with respect to the residents, the way the blacktop is in the back of the house, pretty much the only usable space that is south of the front of the house is this portion of the lot that will be fenced in. The alternatives that don't require a variance would be putting the fence at the rear south end of the house, which would cut by at least half the usable space for the residents and the occupants of the property. It, some might view it as a substantial request, given the configuration of the lot, I don't think it's all that substantial. It's not going to have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood if it's granted. It's, I guess you could say it's self-created, since they bought the house knowing what the configuration of everything was, but it's not self-created in that the house was positioned in the lot the way it was, and no house was built next door, and the lots at some point apparently have been combined, because they're not separate lots, or we'd have a variance to put a fence on a vacant lot. And I think that, that covers all of the factors. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll just note, I, I mean, on Sagamore before, we had a garage application, and someone said, "We've got a very large piece of property, and we want extra garage space for all our stuff." And we denied that request, that application. I think that this application is more like that than different, and I think this is a significant request that would potentially change the character of the neighborhood. Even though the chairman's motion did move the fence back to soften it, I still think it's pretty significant.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? And we're all present. Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, the board is all present. Next application to be determined is relating to 261 Hedgegarth Drive. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an motion with respect to this application concerning the chickens and the ducks? This is a special use permit application.
Seeing none, I'll, I'll try this one. This is, uh, I think we should approve this application, 261 Hedgegarth Drive, for the ducks and the chickens. I do think we need to limit the chickens as they are eliminated due to circumstances that we limit them to four chickens, and again, the three ducks, I guess, is okay. I believe this, this family is, takes good care of, from what I saw visiting, takes good care of the area and the house and around them. It also backs up to a, an area that is really not going to affect anyone, and the two neighbors to the right and left are okay with this. I don't think it hurts anybody else. It is a unique circumstance, because they want them, but it is not wholly unique, because we do allow chickens and ducks in, in the town, if they're done, if it's done right. This is a self-created problem, because that's the type of pet they want for them and their, and their daughter. I don't believe it hurts the character of the neighborhood. It is set back in a very secluded backyard, and I don't think anybody would even know that they're there unless they knew that they were there to begin with.
I, I'll second with some conditions that we grant the permit with the conditions that we've applied for other foul applications that first...
What I have are that there be an annual vet exam with a certification that the animals are healthy, no more than four chickens, the current three ducks, and the town to inspect within one year. Were there any others that I had failed to note yet?
I think we've done this for a five-year period.
Mm-hmm. Five years.
And also the, you probably just said this, the health have, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Anything else? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, you're welcome.
Wow, what a talent.
I would like to make a comment, though, about this, is that, you know, we've had three chickens, then four chickens, and six chickens. This is nine. You know, people should really, you know, come to the town and find out how many they can have, what we're requiring, because the next person might come in with 12. You know, you never know.
Just so it's clear, the, the four chickens, you've got six there now.
Yep.
But when, when two of them pass, they're not replaced.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
The next item to be considered is 3653 St. Paul Boulevard. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an, a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance, area variance is applied for, based on the following findings. Well, the two variances, first, to allow the garage to remain in its existing place with the current setback, and then the second is to allow the maximum height to be increased by eight feet, seven inches. And we approve them on the following findings. There, as the garage currently sits where it sits, there will be no change in the neighborhood to allow it to remain in that place, and there will be no change in the neighborhood to allow the second story to be as high as it is, considering the height of the main structure closer to St. Paul. The building, increasing it, that size, without a toilet, without anything else, is a very small request, considering the overall size of the struc, the main structure and that garage. There is no environmental impact that this will have whatsoever, because again, it's the same footprint. It will have no adverse effect on the, on the overall neighborhood, and while the situation is self-created in that they want to build up, the location of the garage is something that has existed for a while, so that's not self-created.
The, the other thing I would add, that we discuss, is that it'd be non-commercial, absolutely non-commercial, and that, that we make a point to note that the existing noise ordinance applies.
Well, in terms of the commercial versus non-commercial, I think that the current code, as it relates to what uses are allowed, would remain applicable, as would any other code provisions having to do with noise. So, all of this would be subject to compliance with the code. Subject to the requirements of the town code, yeah.
I, I was going to put, based on Mr. Evans', is not to be used for any commercial use, because the town code would allow for a home occupation of some kind or other on a permit, and if we're granting this to be not used for a commercial purpose, and it's a condition of that, then some applicant in the future could come in and ask us to grant the variance from that, but it wouldn't be something that we wouldn't have any say about, or a future board.
So we could, someone could in the future, under the additional language you're saying, so if someone wanted to have a sewing company that they would run out of this location, they could come, they could ask for it, but at this point, it would not be allowed unless a separate request were made.
Right, or a upholstery business, like we had one.
Or, or just if it was just piano lessons.
Piano, yes.
If he was giving piano lessons.
Right.
He'd have to come to the town for the permit for the, for the building.
Well, this, this would, he'd have, under the, if it's a condition of the variance for any commercial use, they'd have to come back in front of us to have that changed, and then it'd be subject to the home occupation requirements.
Yes, which would be required anyway if they were to, okay, yes.
Right, so this is just an extra layer.
A home occupation, you can't have it in accessory structures, so they would have to come back if it became a home occupation.
Okay.
But would you also add, I know this is not their intent that it, and it's not, will not be converted to living space. I mean, I know people are in a, but a residential unit that will, just so it's very clear.
Or is it that, I mean, they could come back, and they could make an application at a later time to make it a residential space, but at this point, I don't think we're saying it can't be used for residential space. We're just saying...
There would be, there would be use variance.
They'd have to come back for it. So we're saying that, yes, they can have the variance to build it high, in the same location, for the permissible uses under the code, not including, and then if they wanted it to be...
Right, not commercial and not living space.
Yeah.
Right, those two conditions.
That's the only thing that would be permitted under the code currently.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? So the, the motion is to grant the variance on the conditions that it not be used for any commercial purpose, nor converted to living space.
Without subsequent application to the board? Or without obtaining appropriate permits?
Without an appropriate subsequent application. Alright. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. All the board is still present. Next item is, well, there's two. The first one is in relation to 419 Lakefront. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with, or a motion with respect to this application?
Before we make the motion, I, I think that Ms. Ivors may have left to do some math. She is, she's, she's doing the calculations that you asked for.
Alright.
So we may want to hold off on this one.
Alright, so then, why don't we take...
You want to do Eastridge Road or Bayfront? Bayshore.
Oh, I forgot the ones that they left. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. 1314 Bayshore Boulevard. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this request. Uh, where's my findings? I just had it right here. Okay, with the following findings. First of all, the, that there would be no change to the character of the neighborhood, because, as I understand, it's already a, a building that exists, so it's just fixing it up. No. Am I on the right one?
This is the...
This is the tram house.
Tram accessory structure.
Yeah, they want a structure.
The structure isn't there.
I think...
The tram is though.
The tram is there, but the structure's not.
Okay. So they can construct the structure.
Right.
For the purposes, of course, of having a place out of the weather for somebody waiting for transportation. There's really no alternate, alternate way to do this, except through a staircase, which would be a step backwards, not forwards, because it's a wheelchair accessibility. It's not a really substantial request, it's just a thin tramway up the hill from the house. There'll be no adverse physical or environmental results of this, since it's all above ground, basically. And the fact that they can straddle a water pipe, I think adds to it, make it a little easier. And is it self-created? It is, but it's because of special circumstances. And I think that's, that's a good enough reason to, to allow this.
I'll second, and I would just add, I, if I'm correct, I understand that a variance was previously granted to build a, a garage in this location?
Mm-hmm.
So I would add that additional finding that while there is no existing structure, there was an existing variance for a structure, so they can build this.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board remains all present. Next item is in relation to 1358 Eastridge Road. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes.
This one's an unlisted action.
Unlisted, oh, that's right. So we have to, did everyone, there's a... part-two impact assessment that indicates that this project would pose no or a small impact, uh, in the neighborhood, and has, calls for a determination of a negative declaration. So I would move that we find, make a de-, negative declaration with respect to seeker, with respect to this application.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, uh, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions, and we're all still present. Someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion that we grant the variances as requested. Um, given the fact that this is in a commercial, uh, district, and the fact that they are, um, commercial properties on either side, also the fact that what this is going to do is enclose an area now that is open to public view, and at times, given the way things are put in there and stored, it might not be as attractive as having it behind a wall that's going to match the other additions on the back of the property. Uh, the alternatives that don't require a variance would require the building to be significantly smaller, which would, um, diminish the benefit to be acquired from having the, uh, space enclosed for storage. Uh, the requests that are being made are not substantial. Uh, it's less than two feet in terms of the, um, rear setback, and the other setback is also, uh, the, the, percentage of the property is also minimal. Uh, there will be no adverse effect on the, uh, environment or in the neighborhood if it's granted. Uh, it's not a self-created situation. It's a function of a number of factors, uh, related to the business and the need to store materials and ways to store them safely. So there are second?
Second.
Are we okay with the parking spaces, too, because they exist?
Yes, also the parking spaces, grant both variances, yes. The, it's been years that they've gotten by with the nine spaces, and adding storage space doesn't, uh, increase the number of people coming to the property who would need to park, so.
So, just to clarify, the motion is to grant the three variances?
Yes.
Uh, the rear setback variance as amended to approximately 58 feet instead of 56, and then the coverage at approximately, uh, 36 percent, and then the parking, as was just mentioned, for the nine spaces.
Correct. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board remains all present.
Who seconded that one, Mr. Chairman?
Jim, Paulino.
Paulino.
Paulino did. Now we can go. Lakefront, yes. You, that's what you were doing the calculations on.
Yes, I was.
All right. So, 419 Lakefront, this is a type-two action for secret purposes.
So, um, would you like me to give a overview of how I sort of calculated?
Sure.
This, the total square footage of what would be the future lot?
Yes.
Um, delta, the delta terrace lot is, um, exact .10 of an acre. So, measuring that square footage, just dividing it equally across both lots, um, would add 2,182.5 square feet to each of the, um, existing lots. So if we sort of split that lot right down the middle, essentially. Um, so 419's resulting, uh, square footage would be, um, 5,667.5 square feet. Um, multiplying that by the 25 percent of allowable lot coverage, that gives you a footprint of 1,416, um, including decks. Um, I'm sorry?
Usually they don't have to count the deck.
Okay. If it's attached. Um, so that would be the, anything, garages, uh, the home structure itself. Um, on 423, the calculation, um-
What was it? I'm sorry, Carrie, it was 14?
16. 14, 16 is the-
So now the variance is only 30, uh, or 20?
Remembering that's a footprint. That's 25 percent of the lot means the building footprint. And so when we look at the proposed footprint of the building, we're meant, we're to calculate the area of the footprint, not the entire building. And so, it's possible that the need for the variance for lot coverage potentially could go away. And I don't have the, I'm not looking at the footprint, um, right now.
But it's going to be close, is what you're telling us.
Yeah.
The request on 419 was 1440.
Was that for the, it's a two-story?
I don't know.
Oh, and let me just double-check the footprint.
Yeah, it was 1440.
And it may be.
And the variance was 569. So, if you're saying it's 1460, then-
Variance would be 24 feet.
So-
But, that's assuming that's a two-story 14.
A- as proposed, the footprint that's presented in the plan for the, for 419, for 419, shows a 46 by 24 footprint of the building. That brings you to 1,104 as a square footage of the footprint.
That's regardless of whether it's one-story or two-story.
Correct. You're just looking at the footprint, not the physical habitable space, it's just the footprint of the building.
So you wouldn't need a variance?
For the, for the lot coverage for that parcel, no.
That parcel, okay.
Correct, for 19, for 19.
But both have decks. Both parcels have decks proposed.
But we don't, the town doesn't cover anything without a roof. We don't usually, unless it's covered. If it's a porch, we do, if it's a deck, not.
Okay.
That's just what's been done. Anything with a roof.
They are covered.
Anything with a roof.
They are covered decks.
Well, then you would count it.
At least on 419.
Then it would be counted if it's a covered.
But, I mean, it's unlikely, well, I don't know.
It's still, with, it still falls under-
Is the deck 300 feet? 336 feet?
Square feet?
Yeah. No?
I think so.
Yeah, it might be.
24 by, can't see the depth, but, less than 24, so 23.
Yeah, this is 20.
Yeah.
It's 20.
I'm, I'm not 100 percent sure how deep it is, but say it's 10 feet deep.
Well, the, I mean, the application's for 1104, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if that's what the application is, and that's what we allow-
Right.
1104 is less than 1440, but if we only allow 1104, recognizing that when they do re-subdivide the-
Actually, they wouldn't need, they wouldn't need a variance for, um, for, they wouldn't need lot coverage, they have up to 1,400 square feet, so that wouldn't even be before this board.
If they were to re-
Right, if they deviate from it, they'd have to come back.
Correct. If they wanted to expand it.
Yeah.
Right now, they, they would have up to 1,400, based on this measurement now, this is a very rough during the deliberation, so what the site, when the, um, prepared re-subdivision map would calculate the exact, uh, square footage and acreage of the proposed lots. At that point, we'd be basing, uh, the 25 percent lot coverage and ensuring that the proposed, um, structure met that requirement. And if it didn't, it would need to come back before this board.
And what about the math for the next one?
So for 423, um, it's a slightly smaller lot. Um, the total coverage, taking into consideration the one-half of the 57 Delta Terrace parcel, would be a total of 4,797 square feet for that lot area, bringing the 25 percent to 1,199 square feet. So the, the lot coverage is a little bit different there. So lot coverage may need relief, um, on this one.
And what's the requ-, what is the request?
And bear with me, that's right here, for 423.
Again, 1440.
Yeah, they're looking for 1440. Okay. Yeah.
The request?
Slightly.
Okay.
So on 419 Lakefront, we're being asked to approve, uh, lot coverage of 1,100 square feet, is that, or what's the percentage of the lot covers that we're being asked to approve?
Well, let's see, that's, the, the way it stands now, it's only the one lot. If we make this subject to him combining the, splitting Delta Terrace lot and, and giving property to each one of these, uh, parcels, then he might not need, um, a variance for the square footage. So, it's all going to be subject to him dividing Delta Terrace, um, for whether or not he needs a square foot variance. The other variances, he's going to need, but, um, if he divides that, that driveway lot, it gives the percentage of land to the other two lots, and that'll, that'll make it where he might not need a variance, or it'll be very close.
So I think Ms. Ivors had a creative suggestion about a conditional approval.
The town requirement allows for 33 percent lot covers?
In residential, 25 percent.
25.
Correct.
So if we were to grant a variance of up to 30 percent, and then he went and added on the property and it came out to 28, he'd be covered, we, and he wouldn't need to come back to us.
Correct.
If it came out to 35 percent, he wouldn't need to come back to us.
Correct.
And if it came out to 24 percent, he wouldn't need to see us at all.
He wouldn't need to see you in the first place, correct.
Right.
Um, so if it's somewhere between 25 and 30, I'm just getting clarification. If, um, if you look at the application material that was submitted, and it's, um, and I'll, I asked, I may have to ask the applicant to clarify their, um, the, the building footprint that is being shown, um, I, it's difficult to read, so I want to just ensure that- No, but that's, he's saying it's different.
Even for the smaller parcel, considering the re-dividing, re-subdivision, 423, uh, 20, 30 percent of the 4797 rough estimate would be 1,439, which is very close to the 1440. It's 1439.1. So it would be less than a foot off. So 30 percent, in theory, should cover both parcels with the re-division.
I agree.
All right. So for-
So we don't, so even though they're asking for 55 percent at this point, which seems very significant, in reality, it's closer to 30 percent in one case and 25 percent in the other, which is permissible.
And those are the only, are those the only, I, I don't have the papers in front of these.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I sound a little-
There's, uh, there's a front, front setback that's, uh, requested. Uh, we're doing, what do we, which one are we doing first, 419?
419.
Okay, so first, the front setback, um, the, the request is 10 feet, the ver-, the allowable is 30 feet, and the variance is 20 feet. Um, who, who's making this motion? You are, or, uh?
I don't think we've made a motion yet, I think we were just getting additional information.
All right, okay, all right. Well, then, I'll go down on, uh, first. And then the rear setback, it's allowable, uh, a code is 30, request is 18, so the variance is 12. The side setbacks, um, are, um, a certain percentage, uh-
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that rear setback goes the same way as the lot coverage if the lots are combined, because then the rear setback-
Right.
Is extended out into that delta lot.
Um, again, if we give them that setback, then if it-
Right.
Increases with the extra lots, that'd help. Uh, and then the, uh, and then there's side setbacks, which are, um, they're requesting 3 feet, and it's a two-foot variance, um, because it's allowed 5 feet.
And as the, you know, as the photograph showed, where the structures currently sit, they sit on or over the property line.
Right.
They're not even on the right-
This is-
Right lines. Um, so, that's that one.
And then there's a, there's a height variance, right?
Uh, maximum height is 24, he's requesting 25, I thank you for, uh, reminding me. Uh, so there's a one-foot height variance also, uh, because he's going to a two-story, and, uh, he'll be up a foot.
Anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
As long as I'm halfway there. Uh, on 419 Lakefront, I'll make a motion that we approve this. Um, and I'm going to start with the first one, the front, front setback is a request of 10 feet, the variance is 20 feet. Um, and again, it's, this is, has a lot to do with the size of these lots, but this gentleman's going to be adding, um, also the front setback, he owns the lot in front of it. So even though there's, they're combined lots, there's Lake Shore Lot, uh, and then, so the, the, the front setback, um, it's to a lot line, but he owns the lot in front of it. So it's, it's, uh, again, to me, it's not substantial. The rear setback is allowed 30 feet, they're requesting 18, the variance is 12. Again, with this rear setback, it might be eliminated when he adds the other lot, but I say we approve it for now. The side setback, uh, are, is, he's requesting 3, it's allowed almost 5, the variance is about 2 feet. Um, and again, I think we can allow that. Um, the height variance, it's allowed 24, he's requesting 25, it's a foot difference. I say we, we agree to that. Uh, in, in reference to the lot coverage, um, I think we should give a 30 percent, uh, lot cover variance. He's requesting 41. Um, I say we give 30, uh, with the assumption that he's going to combine the lots, uh, which will eliminate or, or help him to get to that 30 percent or under mark. So, I guess he's going to have to put the lots together.
When you say with the assumption, should we entertain saying with the condition?
With the condition.
Yeah.
That's what I would, okay.
All right.
I don't, well-
Go ahead.
I don't know that we need to make it a condition, but if you want to.
Well, um-
What I've put down on the sheet is that we're granting a 30 percent lot coverage, allowed if needed after combining lot with Delta Terrace lot.
Very good.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Upson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board continues to remain all present. Move on to 423 Lakefront. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. It's extremely similar to the previous application. Did you want to make the same motion?
I'll make a motion for 423 Lakefront, that we approve this, uh, and I'm going to go down the, uh, front setbacks and, and just like I did the other ones. Front setback is required 30, uh, he's requesting a three-foot front setback, which is a 27-foot variance, and that seems drastic. But again, the front of the house is beachfront, which he also owns that lot, they're combined. They're not combined as far as the tax code, but they are, um, together as far as ownership. Um, so to me, that's not substantial. The rear setback is 30 feet required, uh, he's requesting 3 and another 27-foot variance. But again, in combining the, um, second lot on Delta Terrace for driveway use, he will not have an issue there. But I say we, uh, approve it. Um, the side setbacks, um, uh, again, he's requesting three-foot side setback, uh, and two, uh, it's a two-foot variance. Um, again, height variance is 24-foot is allowed, 25-foot is what's requested, it's only a one-foot height variance for a two-story building. Um, the maximum lot coverage, uh, we're going to go with a 30 percent, uh, coverage, um, uh, request, or that's, that'll be the, uh, the, uh, yeah, 30 percent.
If it's needed after the lots are combined, right.
That's what-
Mr. Noah, I wasn't, you know, the rear setback, one of the, one of the corner of the house is fine, the other one's only like 24, so would need a little bit.
Um, which one?
For the rear setback, for 423 Lakefront.
We were granting that. I mean, the motion would grant it, so we'd grant it, what is the corner?
I know, but he said it might not be needed. It will be needed even with the combination.
No, the lot coverage is what we were talking about.
No, I know, I skipped to the rear.
All right.
He was talking about the rear, he said it might not be needed, it will be needed.
Yeah, okay.
This, this one will be needed, no matter what they do.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
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 Um...
Second?
Second. Mr. Polino? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstention. The board remains all present. Uh, at this point, we will take a short break.
Mr. Chairman?
Do we, do we need a motion to table that, uh...
No, he adjourned it with consent.
He adjourned it, okay.
It was adjourned with his consent.
Alright.
So we don't need to table that, it's just put off. Alright, we will, okay, short break, we'll come back at, uh, seven forty-seven?
I don't think that clock is...
Seven forty-three.
No, that clock's not working.
I noticed that.
It's nine thirty-three, how, how long you want?
We'll, uh, take about ten minutes, and then we'll come back and do the Densmore Road property. I've been watching that clock not move.
I, yeah, just...
Alright, so now that we're, we're back, we can get underway. Um, the last item on our agenda is, uh...
I'll announce it.
You'll announce it. Thank you.
PZB fifteen oh four dash four, upon the matter of request by Lantech, acting as agent for Angelo, uh, La Carta Dello...
Dello.
Thank you. Smelton Holding LLC for use variance and area variances to construct sixty-two townhouse units with less than required side setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises one sixty, Densmore Road in an R-one residential district.
Alright, and, uh, before we get underway, for the benefit of everyone who's here and who may be watching, uh, as was announced, this involves an application, two applications. One is a use variance, and the other is an area variance. The area variance, uh, standard is a practical hardship, uh, and I think everyone would probably agree that the main, uh, issue of contention in this hearing is the application for the use variance. And in order for, uh, an application for a use variance, uh, to be granted, the applicable standards are that the applicant must show that they cannot reason, uh, realize a reasonable return on their investment in the property, that the basis for the variance is to, due to unique circumstances, that the granting of the use variance will not result in a change in the character of the neighborhood, and, and, now, let's start, we'll start right now. During this hearing, the only one that the board expects to hear is whoever is speaking at the podium. If you wanna talk, if you wanna make comments, if you wanna comment on things that are being said, go outside those doors and do it then. We understand that this is a very emotional, uh, application, but we need to be able to hear what's being said, it needs to be able to be recorded, and we need everyone in the room, regardless of your opinion, one way or the other, to be respectful of everybody else. And that means that you don't talk, you don't make comments out loud, and we don't have rumblings like that. If we have that, I'll have everyone wait outside the door, and we can call you in one at a time to participate in the public hearing. I won't deny you the right to be heard, but I will deny you the right to sit in the room and be in any way disruptive. Is that all clear? Good. The third factor is that it will not result in a change in the character of the neighborhood, and the fourth is that it's not self-created. It requires that financial, uh, specifics be provided to the board, it requires that applicant demonstrate the uniqueness, uh, of the, uh, property and why it wouldn't be, uh, possible to construct what might otherwise be allowed under the town board. Uh, it, the applicate with respect to the character, that's a, uh, subjective evaluation, which would be based on the board members' observations and comments from neighbors and those who are familiar with the neighborhood, and then the question of whether or not it's self-created, uh, is dependent on another number of factors. Those are the factors that are primarily going to be addressed, uh, in the hearing, and I would ask, given the hour, which hasn't changed in the last several hours, um, that we, uh, limit the comments as much as possible to those factors. Uh, obviously, uh, I have, during the time I've been in the board, we have not enforced any time limitations, but I would ask you to keep in mind, we are all volunteers, it is nine fifty-two, uh, in the evening, and we'd like you to, if there's sixty people here who are opposed to it, if two or three of you tell you, tell us that you're opposed, and the rest line up and say, "We're all opposed too," we'll understand that, okay? If you ha, I'm not trying to limit in any way what you wanna say, and if it's different than what somebody, I'd just prefer not to hear, "We're opposed to the project sixty times," if we can avoid that, okay? Alright, so, the public hearing is continued. Mr. Knopf, you're, uh, a member of the bar and an officer of the court, so you do not need to be sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Again, I'm Alan Knopf, attorney for Smellholdings, which is the applicant and owner of the property. Uh, we did present the case, uh, about a year ago, but since it's been so long and We did present the case about a year ago, but since it's been so long, and I think some of the members have changed on the board, I'll try to briefly review the case, which is set forth in our application and the various supplements. As you know, the planning board made a negative declaration earlier this year, the application was kind of on hold pending the secret determination, and that's why we've gone forward at this point. Originally, our client came forward in 2014 with its original application. He, we did, the town did agree with my interpretation that a duplex would be allowed on each lot, that's what the zoning code said at the time, and reliance on that. Our client purchased the property in early 2015. After that, in response to complaint or concerns from a neighbor, the town board actually changed the law to specifically address the situation and say that we could only have one, a single-family unit per lot, not a duplex.
I just want to comment on that for a second, and Alan, I know we've talked about it a few times during public hearings or public meetings, as well as offline. The town didn't necessarily agree with your interpretation, the town agreed that there was ambiguity in the law, and it changed the code to prevent misapplication of the law in accordance with what we thought the intent of the law was. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Well, I understand, Mr. Brenner, and we obviously talked about this...
And we can disagree on that, Alan, but I just wanted...
Yes, and I think, you know, again, I have, in the seeker documentation, tab A, we show Ms. Champion from your office agreed that duplexes were allowed, and we know that any ambiguity in a zoning law is interpreted in favor of the property owner. So maybe whatever the intent of the town board was, or the zoning ordinance, that's the way it should have been interpreted.
Ultimately, though, I think that's an issue that, a factor, that the board would need to take into account, one way or the other, in resolving the application.
Right, it goes to whether this is a self-created hardship.
Right.
And what we're saying is, our client would have never bought the property, nor gone forward with his plans, but for that interpretation.
Right, that's one of the things that we have to take into account and make a determination. If we determine that if we agree with you, then we would be likely determining that it wasn't self-created, and if we disagree with you, we might, that might influence the determination that it was self-created.
Right, right. The psych capacity worksheet had allowed thirty-eight buildings, which would, if they were duplexes, would be seventy-six. When they laid out the conventional, single-family site plan, really only fit, I think, thirty-one lots, given the terrain and the way the property was laid out, which if duplexes were allowed, would have been sixty-two, and that's why we're here asking for the density back at sixty-two. The, in the seeker documentation, tab A, there was the conventional layout, and it shows that it would basically be back-to-back with the Kennedy Circle properties, there would not be any buffer. This site plan would include a thirty-foot buffer on the north side of the property that would buffer the structures from the existing neighborhood with trees and additional landscaping, et cetera. So, moving to the, you know, the use variance application, Mr. Brenner subsequently made an interpretation that we require a use variance to have the, either townhouses or attached housing, basically, rather than falling under the single-family, even if they're clustered together. So going through the test, we think we've demonstrated it's not economically feasible to develop the subdivision with detached, single-family homes and individual lots. A large part due to the development costs, really can't be spread along, spread among, satisfactory among the different thirty-one houses. Mr. Bruckner is here tonight, can answer any questions, he's previously presented, you have his dollars and cents analysis where he went through the costs for a single-family development or a, the development that, basically, that we're proposing, and the bottom line was that it costs more to build the single-family houses than you can sell them for. There's a negative return. It just is not feasible to build single-family development in this location, the costs are greater than you can sell the houses for. So not only can't you make a reasonable return, you can't make any return, you make a negative return. And we did crunch through the numbers on townhouses and all, and it shows approximately before the builders, overhead and all, carrying costs, et cetera, in the neighborhood of the low twenties, twenty-three or so percent. After carrying costs, overhead, et cetera, it's more like in the twelve percent range or so. We did have questions at the last time I was here about building costs, so we did do a survey of some local builders to see if their costs were in line with Mr. Liccardello's estimates. He had estimated the cost of about ninety-five dollars a square foot for building townhouses, and about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot for single-family detached. I did survey a few of them, were my clients. One is a builder who's building in Mendon and Victor, and his cost, he basically agreed with those costs, he said those are about what I have. Another builder, Home Pride, in the west side of the county, gave similar ranges, ninety to a hundred dollars per square foot for townhouses, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty per square foot for a single-family, but really, you know, it depends a little bit on the interior finishes, you know, the higher end costs more, obviously. If you've got the marble countertops and all that kind of stuff, it's going to be higher cost, the nice woodwork and all that. A third client of mine, Robert Hannan, he builds a single-family detached in Greece and Charlotte, he gave me an estimate of about a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty per square foot for the single-family, doesn't build townhouses. I talked to Pat Bassett, he, I think he builds a little bit, maybe a little bit higher end. His price was about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot for single-family detached, and he said the townhouses he builds aren't a heck of a lot different. The costs are actually pretty similar, I think, you know, he's putting a lot more bells and whistles, I think, on his product. So we went through and plugged these numbers into Mr. Bruckner's numbers, and it really didn't turn out a lot different, you know, the high and the low, I mean, the high, you'd actually lose money on the way around, I think you, Mr. Liccardello, he's planning on market rate, high-quality housing, but maybe not, you know, the very top of the line. If you did that, you still couldn't make money, but if you had a reasonably, reasonable quality, you are able to make money with the townhouses, but with the single-family, you're losing, couple reasons for that, it's a little more per square foot. The detached houses are a little bigger, generally, like, we put in fifteen-hundred square foot, more like, I think about thirteen-hundred square foot for the townhouses, and just the number of units, because you can spread the development costs through more units. So it's the development cost per, yes?
If I could ask a question about your May sixteenth letter, which I think is the letter you were just describing, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, on the back, you have the calculations, the middle column is the detached homes?
Yes.
And you have three price points, low, average, and high of one fifteen, one twenty-five, and one thirty-five. Is that correct? Is that the way, am I reading it correctly?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Detached homes is the middle column?
Oh, one fif, yes.
Yeah, one fifteen, okay. So as I'm looking on the, and for row houses, you have ninety, ninety-five, and one thirty-five is your price points, is that right?
Correct.
If I'm looking on the front page, the range for townhouses, the row houses, I understand, is ninety to one thirty-five, and you have that reflected from ninety, ninety-five, and one thirty-five.
Right.
But the ranges for single-family are seventy-seven dollars to a hundred and thirty-five, and your low price point is a hundred and fifteen dollars. If you ran the numbers with that seventy-seven...
Oh, that's...
As opposed to one, or is that a typographical error, the seventy-seven?
That's a typo, that's not correct.
So what should it say on the first page?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That should say, let me see, in the paragraph above...
Paragraph that reads, "In summary."
Yeah, no, no, you're right, the summary is wrong, I apologize. The, let me see here, Mr. Liccardello said one twenty-five, the builder who builds in Victor and Mendon, which is RSM, they said about the same, a hundred and twenty-five. The Home Pride said a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, and Hannan said a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, and Bassett said one thirty-five. So my low was really one twenty, oh, I'm sorry, one fifteen, excuse me, one fifteen was Hannan building in Greece and Charlotte. So that's a typo, I'm sorry.
So the number shouldn't be seventy-seven?
It said, so please correct that, that is incorrect, that is wrong.
Because, yeah, it did not add up to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay. So, and those, the correct numbers are reflected on page two, there was a typo. Alright, so the, so we think, and Mr. Bruckner's here, if there's any questions as to his analysis and all, the next, but again, bottom line is, you're not going to be able to build single-family houses and sell them for even breakeven. The next issue is unique circumstances, a couple things make it unique. One is a change in the law, I think it's a unique situation, frankly, I haven't really encountered this situation before. Second is the location, it's one of the last parcels in Arunacote that's not developed, but it's fully developed around it, it's got the creek on one side, and apartments right next to it, across the street is a school, basically behind it is the expressway, and only to one side is the single-family residential neighborhood. So it's a real mixed-use area, and it had been, the pass had been farmed, and then it was used for, I think for like, trail bikes and all, it looks like, like there was a path for, kids would ride minibikes or whatever in the past. There's only really one way in and out there, so it's an unusual situation, that it's not in the middle of all single-family homes, only on the one side. It's really a mixed-use neighborhood with the school and the apartments and all. As far as self-created, first I'll step back, Mr. Bettinger, he was there since nineteen fifty-one, and, you know, there's been testimony about maybe they wanted to buy it for the school or whatever, but there's been no successful residential development on the property, and our client went ahead based on, really Ms. Champion's confirmation that she agreed with, the way I read it, it says...
Yeah, and again, I would disagree with that.
I know, I know, yeah. I mean, but again, her, if I could just read her email, I say, "Ashley, my understanding is that the town agrees that duplexes and separate lots, one duplex per lot, is permitted, comma, correct?" Her answer, "That's correct, Ashley." So I read that as her saying I was correct. I understand you're disagreeing.
Right, I mean, it doesn't grant an approval, there's no vested rights, I mean, we don't have to get into all of that.
Well, I'm not arguing, I'm not necessarily, I'm reserving my rights on vested rights, but I'm not arguing vested rights. All I'm saying is, that's what we were told, okay? And in reliance of, and that, truly in reliance on that, our client bought the property. That's why he wouldn't have done it, but he did because of that. So that's why I'm saying it's not self-created hardship. And, you know, the circumstance where the market prices for homes in East Arunacote just won't support this kind of development right now, I mean, that's just where it is. And I told you, as you know, I've said before, I grew up in East Arunacote, I'm proud of my heritage in Arunacote, but it's just, the numbers just don't work. Now, as far as change in character of the neighborhood, there really will not be a change because it's a mixed-use neighborhood. And in fact, we would put the thirty-foot buffer, which would be a lot better than putting the single-family lots right up to the adjacent residential neighborhood, but it's a mixed use, you got a school, you got apartments, it's not a, you know, single-family-dominated neighborhood, it's a mix of uses. And it's, the, we think the, and we did give you the view of the structures, there's a simulation in the materials, they're really very attractive. In the negative declaration, I'm going to read something, the planning board looked at community character, and here's what they said. This is in the planning board's negative declaration, and this is quote, "However, the proposed development is considered consistent with the overall mixed-use generally residential setting of this area in the town of Arunacote. Given the varying sizes, height, dimensions, and massing of the existing mixed land uses, the proposed development would not be in sharp contrast to the predominant architectural scale or character of the area," unquote. That was the finding of the planning board. So, I think that it clearly is a mixed-use area, we also quoted from the comprehensive plan, and the planning board actually, you know, indicated that this, basically, that the development was not inconsistent with the plan. The plan says, well, quote, "Well-designed, high-density residential development can expand the town's resident base and provide critical mass needed to support nearby residential businesses," unquote. And also, the plan says, there's a goal to, quote, "Expand the current range of options, cost size, and type density, to maintain healthy neighborhoods, increase property values, and ensure high-quality housing for all incomes." And would, again, quote, "It would ensure a range of housing options for new residents." Also, it's to be attractive to seniors, our client is willing to limit this to seniors, that's really who we expect to live here. We don't expect any, you know, single, we don't really expect any kids attending the schools in this, really see this as an empty nest or senior type of development, and he is willing to limit. So, we think we have met, I understand the use variance standard is very, is hard to meet, but for this situation, I think we've demonstrated, we have met all four of the factors, and the use variance should be granted.
Could you just clarify as to Ms. Champion's email? What's the date of that email, and what was the date that the purchase orders or purchase offers were made on these properties?
Well, I think the purchase offer was made previously, but it was contingent. In other words, our client had, I know he had an agreement to purchase, was, I think was contingency, or at least a letter of intent, I don't know, I didn't handle the transaction, so maybe Angelo can speak to it, so I didn't, but we came forward, I know we met with the neighbors at Thanksgiving of 2014...
I was just curious, the date of her email?
Her email is dated December fourth, 2014, the deed is dated later in December of 2014, and was recorded February of 2015.
Okay.
So the deed, they actually went through with the transaction, waived the contingencies after Ms. Champion's email.
And the context of that question, though, was in connection with duplexes, right? It wasn't more than two units in a single building? The question was asked...
That's correct.
The question in the email, not my question.
Right.
The question in the email was duplexes...
Correct, it was not townhouses, right.
Not townhouses.
No, you're right. It was duplexes, and I think, you know, that...
I think the context is a little different. I definitely understand that, it just seems peculiar to me that someone would rely on an email... Right. ...to consummate a deal of this magnitude, but that's beside the point, I just asked for the dates, and you provided them.
Right, I mean, I frankly rely on email from attorneys all the time, so, maybe that's misguided, but I, when an attorney sends me an email, I take that as a statement, whether it's in a letter or email, whatever, it's, I take that as a representation from the attorney, and I think that's the way business is done, at least the way we do it, I don't know. So, and, you know, and I think that was certainly, made sense. The area variance issue also, we have area variances, we're seeking for both the setbacks, if we do separate lots, one option here would be to have one lot, could be condominium with one lot, but we would require it with a... But we would require it with a separate lots, we would require setback variances. Also, and the density would be an area variance, the number of units. The neighborhood character, we've already gone through that. The alternate solutions, we really could not come up with any because the only, the only allowed use is our single-family residential. I guess a church. We didn't, you know, Mr. Bettinger was unable to, you know, get interest in use for anything like that. And that's about it. So really, the question is, could you do single-family? And to do single-family, you know, you've got to put in your street and all that. And we showed the development costs and we tried to put as many as we could to spread the cost out, and it still doesn't work. Substantial, allowed 38 units under the psych capacity. We're asking for 62. So I understand that's quantitatively substantial, but it is, it is a decrease from the 76 we originally thought we could do. Physical environmental conditions, well, we've already got a negative declaration. The traffic really, we did traffic study. It's really very minor. There's really no tra- We even requested the boards, we looked at the Denzmore and Norton intersection. There's really no, we don't degrade the level of service in any way. The 30-foot buffer would be an improvement over what would be allowed as of right on the R1. We went to great trouble on the stormwater. We're going to have a great stormwater system that's going to collect the water and it won't endanger the steep slope. We're staying off the steep slope. We did all this geotechnical work to show that there will not be a danger to the steep slope and the water will be collected. Only, I think the pond would overflow once every 10-year, on the 10-year storm, basically. And then that's why we have, we have this pipe that would go down, pipes that would go down the hill and then there'd be like a French drain almost to diffuse it, so there would not be a problem. We went back and forth with Labella and they were satisfied. I mean, we had a lot of different alternatives, but that's what we came up with. So, and we're going to have a lot of green space here along the south, especially along the southeast boundary, along Arunacote Creek. So I think that, that it's a real, you know, a great development as far as physical environmental conditions. We've addressed everything. And last, self-created, we've gone through that. It wasn't self-created. So we think the benefit of the variances do outweigh leaving the property as is, just a vacant piece of property, not, nobody paying any taxes and, you know, nobody enjoying Arunacote. So we think this would be a great project for Arunacote, and we ask that the board grant the, grant the variances. Any other questions or questions for Mr. Bruckner on his numbers or?
Just on the self-created point, has Mr. Lechart Delo marketed the property since he took title?
No, he has not. He's not. I mean, we've just been doing this for two and a half years.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Although I do know Mr. Bettinger, I think, had marketed off and on for quite a while, you know, for, I won't say he did it for the whole 60 years or whatever, but he did try to sell it over the years and, you know, so.
I just want to be sure, my mind's getting all mixed up with this stuff and I'm having trouble keeping up with it all. But if I understand, the proposal now is for 62 units.
Correct.
So far, I'm right?
Correct.
And they are row houses?
Yeah, townhouses, whatever you want to call it. They would be eight buildings of eight, except one would be six. The numbers work out. But most of them would be eight-unit buildings, which we think looks, actually looks more attractive than the duplexes. You know, then, that's what the proposal is, yes.
That's what you've got there, right?
Yeah.
And we're talking about, and the average cost per square foot?
Yes.
I'm on the second page of the document.
Yes, yes.
So probably be around $95 a square foot?
Correct, correct.
And the bottom line is, down below where it's a profit thing, right? That's the profit thing?
Correct. The margin, yes. So the, which says the average, based on the average cost, that's the margin based on, you know, as a percentage of the sale price. So for the row houses or townhouses, it's about, I think that's about 23% or so. And that's before the soft costs, like the builder paying for taxes and his staff and me and engineering and all that kind of stuff. So that's why in taxes and all, so that's why you get more down to more like a 12% or so return on, when all is said and done.
But that does include paving a road or roads?
Yes.
Sewer lines and all that stuff?
Yes, that's all included. Because if you turn to, if you can find it, Mr. Bruckner's report, May 26th of last year, they had attaches on the last page and estimates from Land Tech where they went through the cost of development. And basically, to do the row or townhouses or the duplexes, the, well, no, basically, the, strike that. The row houses or townhouses, the development cost was about $675,000 for all the, before you build a unit to put in the roads and sewers and all that. And for detached houses was $699. Not a lot different. Maybe about $25,000 more for detached, but not a lot different. The difference is, you're dividing by more units with town or row houses. You can spread those costs among twice as many units because you can, you know, put them side by side and fit more units in, basically.
And what is the criteria for determining whether it's going to be senior housing or not senior housing?
I think, yeah, I think we're allowed to limit it to, maybe Mr. Brenner can correct me if I'm wrong. We can limit it to 55 and over and restrict that, I think, without discrimination or whatever. And we're willing to do that if the board wants to do that, if they-
I think it would be a factor that would weigh heavily in my mind if I lived on Kennedy Circle.
Yeah.
A lot different to have a bunch of seniors next door than kids running around and bikes.
Right. Well, I mean, I'll say that, we will request that we amend the application. We'll limit it to seniors 55 and over. Which includes me, which I don't really think myself as a senior, but.
World, welcome to the club, yeah. Okay, thank you. That's kind of clears it up.
Any other questions or?
I've got a question on the detached home metrics that Mr. Bruckner prepared. So you spec an average house of 1,500 square feet. What happens to the margins if you bump that up slightly? You know, 1,800, 1,900, that might be more typical in Monroe County for a detached house. I assume there's a portion of these costs that are fixed, and no matter what you build, you're going to recover those. So there becomes a point where, you know, that you probably hit a break-even point and then the profits increase?
Well, I guess for the record, I'm Kevin Bruckner with Bruckner, Tillman, Rossi. I'm a real estate consultant and our address is 500 Linden Oaks.
And you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So in answer to your question, if you're going to build a bigger house, your actual density is going to go down because you're going to require a bigger lot for a bigger house. So now, instead of 31 homes, maybe you're now down to 26 homes or 25 homes with a bigger house. So that, you know, you still have the same problem.
Could you refresh my recollection, sir? In your May 26th letter, when you have, at the beginning of the analysis summary, and you're discussing for row houses, detached homes and duplexes, different development costs. So on page three, you say, "Per-unit building cost per letter." Can you just remind me of what that letter was that you relied on for those building figures?
Yeah, I believe it's right in my, my letter here, but there was a, an analysis provided by the engineer, which I believe was Land Tech, and that is at the end of that particular report.
But I don't see, I see these as development costs, per lot development costs, the December 1st, 2014 letter?
Yes, but if you look down to the comments underneath the grid, it says, "Per-unit building cost." It has 1,300 square feet at $95 a square foot.
And that was the number that you relied on, is this $95? But do you know where they got those figures from?
Well, they're an engineer, so I don't know where they got those figures from. I relied upon them. But that's why Mr. Knopf submitted that additional letter to you where he surveyed a number of builders and those costs were in line with what the other builders gave us.
It's funny that Mr. Knopf would rely on an email when a letter has typos in it and mistakes, but that's all right. Thank you.
But I mean, again, I think, I don't think Ms. Champion has said her email was an error, so Mr. Brenner has qualified it, but I understand.
When was the, when did the town board act? You said the deed was recorded in February. I'm curious if it was signed and delivered in December, just not recorded until February?
Yeah, it was like, the deed is dated like, something like December 29th or so. I'm not sure. It's included in the materials, but the, it was-
February 6th, 2015.
Yeah, it was recorded, I, you know, I didn't do the closing, so I don't know why. But the, the local law was-
Adopted on March 19th, 2015. It's Local Law Number 2-2015. Which means that the, the process would have been initiated two months prior to that. Because there's the, the indication to rezone or to amend the zoning code language. A hearing is set the month prior to the adoption of those amendments. And so likely, the action would have been initiated at the early, at the latest would have been initiated in January at the town board level. So the town board action to amend the code to close the loophole that was discovered would have taken, taken action that would have been initiated in, I can go get the exact dates of when it appeared before the town board.
I'm just wondering what was done in January, what was done in February, what was done in March?
I'd be happy to run upstairs and pull the resolutions to go along with that, if that's helpful.
It would be, yes.
Okay.
For me, anyway.
Sure.
Seems the deed is dated December 19th, 2014? No, December 19th.
19th? I thought somebody said the 29th.
I think somebody over there did.
Yeah.
But the, either way, the email dealt with duplexes, not row houses?
It dealt with two units in a single structure.
It just used the word duplex.
Right. It did not deal with townhouses. There's no doubt about that. But all I can say is, I mean, the closing was in late December. Why they, you know, why they, why they, it didn't go on record, I can't tell you. I could get that information from his, you know, from his counsel, but I didn't-
I mean, the signing of the deed and delivery is, recording is just putting the public on notice. Delivery is the important thing. So if the closing was in December, then that's done deal.
Hello, everybody. My name's Angelo Lechart Delo, and I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth. Just to clarify a couple of things, I'm not in the, I'm not in the business of buying property that requires changes in zoning, okay? The whole reason I purchased this property was because it was, first of all, it was under contract, contingent on getting approvals and contingent on the proper zoning to build townhomes, or at the least duplexes. Originally, first, my first choice would be townhomes because I think they're more attractive. And they offer quite a few benefits to the town as well. One of them being that it's a private road, doesn't require the town to plow it, doesn't require maintenance by the town. And it also, you can, you can group the homes together, cluster them, and it allows for a nice buffer to the neighbors to the north. Whereas just single-family homes wouldn't offer that. I had came in and spoke to Mr. Weatherby, Nick Weatherby, that used to work for the town. And also, it was confirmed by Ashley that if townhomes weren't permitted, that I could always fall back on duplexes. And that's the whole reason why I purchased the property. Had I been told that there's nothing going to happen here except single-family homes, I would have walked away from the deal and it would still be in Mr. Bettinger's name and I wouldn't, I wouldn't own the property right now. But getting back to what Mr. Paulino said, I'm surprised that he would even say that because he's a lot younger than I am. And nowadays, everything's done by email. Matter of fact, they had me sign in my name for this document signed on the screen in my computer. That's how things are done now. I mean, email, emails, everything's done by email. So I rely on email quite a bit now. And that's unfortunate, that's, you know, what everything's going to now is email. You don't see many letters. But just to clarify that, I mean, I don't like coming in front of the zoning board for variances. Not because I don't like you people, but I just, it's not productive. I mean, this is going on three years now. And I have jumped through more hurdles than you could imagine just getting through Seeker. I mean, I've gone through traffic studies. First one wasn't good enough. They wanted it studied again, so I had two of them done. Finally, the third one, I guess, you know, three's a charm, the third one was good. For Seeker, they required, for drilling, they wanted me to drill. Geotactical drilling to make sure that the pond would be, would suffice and it wouldn't fail. I drilled down 60 feet, had a bunch of test holes drilled for the Seeker determination by ROC drillers there. And they determined that everything was fine. The planning board wasn't happy enough. They wanted more test holes done. So I hired an outfit out of Buffalo. I mean, it's all I've been doing is spending money on this project, just trying to, you know, move along and everything that's asked of me, you know, just trying to comply with everything that's asked. I mean, and now it's going on three years. If every project took three years, I'd be out of business. I mean, and all I'm looking to do is something that the town's going to be very happy with when I'm done. You can, you're more than welcome to go look at the last project I did, which is in Webster. It's Village Path Townhomes. It's a beautiful, beautiful townhome project. I mean, they appraised for over $200,000 apiece, these townhome units. They had granite countertops, hardwood floors. I mean, they were gorgeous. And I think the town of Arunacote needs something like that. I mean, right now, there's nothing, there's nothing new that a senior can go to that would, you know, would give them something like this. And all these towns have it. You go to Penfield, Webster, they all have it. Arunacote doesn't have it, and this is a perfect site for, for that. And it wouldn't be a burden on the, on the, on the school system at all or anything. I find that most of my tenants that are, that are over in Webster are seniors. The majority of them are. There's a few that aren't, but the majority of them are seniors. And this is what they're looking for. Something that's maintenance-free, that they don't have to worry about, and they're very happy. And I, and I think this would be, this would definitely be something very positive in the town of Arunacote. And that's how I feel. And getting back to, you know, what was said specifically by the deputy town attorney. Had I not met with, if I had not met with Nick Weatherby and wasn't assured that I could at least fall back on duplexes, and I didn't have that email from Ashley that said duplexes are permitted, that was what I was relying on to close on the property. So like I said, I'm not looking to buy property and then come in front of the zoning board to get, to get relief. I mean, I commend you guys for all the work you do, and you don't, you don't need that. And I don't, I certainly don't need that. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Just to clarify, when was the closing?
In December. But then you have Christmas, New Year's, and Mr. Bettinger was, he was very elderly. And he relied on his attorney, which was Mr. Mark Jeffries, I believe, which he's constantly out of the country and stuff. So we, I don't know what the delay was, but the closing happened in December. I signed everything in December.
And the money was exchanged?
Money was exchanged. Everything happened in December.
Could you just speak to a moment? Mr. Knopf said that you would be willing to put the age limitation on of 55 or older?
Absolutely.
Do any of your other properties have a 55 or older age limitation?
One did that, that I used to have. It was in Pelmyra. It was 55 and over.
Did it create any problems getting occupancy?
It makes, well, it made it a little tougher. I mean, because you- It, it, it makes a, well, it made it a little tougher. I mean, because you have to, you know, turn down, um, younger families that come. I mean, you have to...
I mean, is that, is that practical to have an age restriction on this property?
It's done. It's done. There, there's some that are done. I mean, it, they allow you to, um, and I don't know what the percentage is, but they allow you a certain percentage that you can still rent, uh, even if it's fifty-five and over, there's still a certain, a small percentage that you can rent to someone that might be under fifty-five.
Is that what they, is that what they did at the, um, on Call of a Road by Saint Salomes? Did they put those age restrictions on there? Yes? Okay.
It's, uh, marginal with income.
Income, not age, okay.
And age.
Oh, both?
Yes.
All right.
Well, one thing I can promise you is every one of these townhomes, if, if, if townhomes is going to be approved by the, I still have to go to the planning board. If townhomes are approved, I can guarantee that every one of these townhomes will be worth at least as much as any of those homes to the north, if not more. Any other questions for me? Uh, if not, I know you, it's getting late, so I, I don't want to keep anybody here any longer.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? If so, please come up to the podium. If there's more than one, two through whatever, please line up on the west side so we can move forward. Someone raised their hand, said they wanted to speak in favor of the application? Apparently not. Okay. Those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, step right up and line up along the west side there so that we can have everyone move along.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Alreshad, and I reside at ninety-five Kennedy Circle. I may go over the time limit a little bit because I am speaking on behalf of many neighbors here that don't want to get up to do input. Last meeting, we heard Mr. Knopf make statements regarding how this wasn't self-created because Mr. Bettinger has been trying to sell one sixty Dunsmore since nineteen fifty-one. Mr. Bettinger had opportunities to sell, he just didn't. Way back November of two thousand five, he was speaking to the East Aronacquite School District about their interest in purchasing the land. The school district had the parcel appraised. It appraised in two thousand five for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Mr. Bettinger backed out of selling to the school district because he determined this price wasn't enough money. The school district even tried to entice him to sell by offering to name the land Bettinger Park. Then in May of two thousand nine, the school district started negotiating with Mr. Bettinger again. The school district spent money again to have the land appraised. The land now appraised for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, Mr. Bettinger would not make a deal. So in two thousand five, he could have sold the property for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In two thousand nine, he could have sold the property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fast forward to two thousand fifteen, Mr. Bettinger decides to sell the property to this developer for the bargain price of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have copies of the appraisal dates and amounts that I will submit. These are only two instances where the property could have been sold. There could have been many other offers throughout the years. This proves this is self-created. Mr. Knopf says that the developer bought the property thinking he could build two dwellings on each lot. Mind you, they had no idea what the EPods were or what the real approval process would yield. He purchased property with no government approvals. It could have come back as twenty-two homes allowed, for all he knew. He had no idea. He created his own hardship, and Mr. Bettinger has nothing to do with this. Nobody buys property without receiving approvals first. Last meeting, Mr. Knopf stated that these were unique circumstances because the property borders the creek and there are EPods on the property. What is so unique about that? This property wasn't unique enough to even warrant having a seeker done on it. It doesn't have enough environmental concerns to even have state environmental quality review done. I'm sorry, you can't have it both ways. I'm now going to be referencing a letter that was recently received by the town dated May sixteenth from Mr. Knopf regarding comparison cost numbers of row houses, detached homes, and duplexes. First off, I'd like to ask why the detached home unit numbers are for only thirty-one units. I looked up the site capacity worksheet this weekend, which I have a copy of here, and thirty-three detached houses fit on the property. Excluding two houses, of course, helps the applicant's numbers push his apartments. Another huge discrepancy is square footage. If you will notice, the building size in square feet is only thirteen hundred square feet for the row houses and, and duplexes, but fifteen hundred square feet for the detached homes. How is this a fair comparison? They have inflated the cost of detached homes tremendously. Per our R one code, the minimum allowed size of a single-family home in our town is eleven hundred square feet. Why aren't any of these comparison numbers for eleven hundred square feet home? They have aided, they have added four hundred square feet to their comparisons, which is over a third larger, adding thirty-six percent. Since it is seniors he is trying to attract, wouldn't small ranches attract seniors much more than up-and-down rental row houses? The applicant has repeatedly claimed this was a project for seniors, or they would try to encourage seniors. Senior projects around the entire country are one story. A detached eleven hundred square foot home, times the average cost per square foot of a hundred and eighteen dollars, equals one twenty-nine eight, plus unit lot cost of twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I am using Mr. Knopf's unit lot cost, but that number is very high because they figured this number on thirty-five units instead of the thirty-one, which is more expense for a longer road, water main, sewers, et cetera. That gives us a grand total of one hundred fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-eight. Instead of the two oh eight, four thirty-eight for the fifteen hundred square foot they quoted, a difference of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars per unit. If you multiply this times thirty-three houses, this is a savings of one point nine million dollars. I now turn my attention to Mr. Kevin Bruckner's dollars and cents analysis dated May twenty sec, twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen. From page five, I'm quoting, "Note that there were no duplex or townhouse, townhouse unit sales, thus, single-family sales were used for comparison, being consistent with the analysis for the single-family detached units." "Statistical analysis consistent with the analysis for the single-family detached units." "Statistical analysis comparing all the sales of single-family detached homes versus townhouses in Monroe County for units between twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square foot built with the past fifteen years indicates that townhomes actually sell for ten percent more than single-family detached homes," end quote. First off, none of this analysis has any findings regarding eleven hundred square feet, what our R one minimum code allows. Instead of the study being just in Aronacquite, the entire county was examined, and a third of the data from the study was during the time of a housing crisis. Homes were not selling. This skews the data. I also wonder how he deduced that townhomes sell for ten percent more when he states that he couldn't find any sales of townhomes and used analysis of single-family detached homes. Strangely enough, I went online today and found a slew of townhouses for sale in Monroe County. The numbers from the applicant are not accurate. They have excluded two more houses that will fit per the site capacity. They have also distorted the unit lot costs. They have done their comparisons on a fifteen hundred square foot detached home instead of eleven hundred. Looks like purposeful manipulation of numbers, and it isn't right or fair. How many chances does an applicant get to spin his numbers? How many meetings does a neighborhood have to come and defend their community? A use variance can't be granted because a developer isn't going to make as much as he wants to. Mr. Bettinger's other property that recently sold on Party Road has custom single-family homes being built. The Party Road lot was more costly per acre than Dunsmore. I stated those numbers last meeting. These properties are a stone's throw away from each other. The square footage of the new houses on Partie are one thousand four hundred and forty, three-bedroom ranches. The price is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. How is it possible for this builder to be able to make a profit on single-family homes, especially when the land he purchased was more costly? It can be done. R one can be upheld in our town. Nowhere in our town's master plan is there a call for more apartments in Aronacquite. Apartments were never in intent of our R one code. The manipulation of our R one code that this applicant is trying to get away with should make everyone upset in our town. If this application is granted approvals, we should just throw the code book out because R one means anything goes, and I mean anything. Please deny this application for a use variance and uphold what R one zoning really means in Aronacquite. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Hi, I'm Mark Palizzi at two eighteen Dunsmore Road. I noticed that everything we've spoken about so far tonight has all been dollars and cents, okay? They said they did a market, a, a traffic analysis. I've got video of the traffic that comes out of that school at two-thirty in the afternoon, the traffic that goes into that school at seven-thirty in the morning. You put sixty-two homes in that little lot, that's going to triple the traffic that comes out of there. I pulled out of my street this morning on Dunsmore Road. It took me over twenty minutes to get out just because of the traffic from the school. You can't tell me sixty-two homes instead of thirty-one is going to be feasible. It's not, okay? You can't compare apartments on Norton Street to what's on Dunsmore Road. To say there's apartments there already, this is, that's okay. It's not. There's apartments on King's Highway, doesn't mean they're suitable for boat cart, which is behind them. It's the same thing over here. Apartments on Norton Street don't compare to apartments that would be on Dunsmore Road. Dunsmore Road just isn't going to be able to accommodate that kind of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Barone, one five four Awwood Drive. Been a town resident for fifty years. Ten of those years I lived near Dunsmore Road, on Wall Road. I know the area quite well. And for anyone to say that it's a mixed-use area, I almost laughed. It's not mixed-used, unless you can consider a school in a residential area making that area a mixed-use. There's no way you can count that school as a mixed-use area. Number two, the apartments on Norton Street, legacy of Cranberry Landing, is contiguous to the outer area of this area, but you can't count it within that area, just like you can't count if there's a street not too far from Kodak. Kodak is in that, in that area, where that street is. Doesn't make sense at all. I've served on the Aronacquite Planning Board for fourteen years and ten as the chairman. I've seen many reports from applicants that are biased. The numbers are not wrong, and they ignore some facts, and I hope to give you a couple of those tonight. I submit the following objections and comments to this application. This is a self-created inflicted hardship. Why? Many times on the planning board, on a major, important project, the applicant will get approvals first. The purchase of the property is contingent upon approvals. I can't tell you how many times that happened. Why this applicant didn't do that, I would never rely on an email. I've taken a few law courses at Fisher in the past, and I still don't see where emails now are legal documents in deference to something that's a written document. Also, why would a applicant rely upon someone else's attorney? He should rely on his own attorney doing the research. It boggles my mind. Mr. Knopf's letter of May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, page two, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, oh, eight-five, the cost for site development. But that amount, as it was stated before, is for thirty-five homes, not thirty-one. Therefore, the number is inflated by thousands. You don't have to have a degree in accounting to see this. How can you trust anything in any of these numbers? I mean, I've never, you know, I've got an accounting degree. I've never seen so many numbers in what has been presented to this board. And all I can say is, it's confusing. Number three, it's my understanding the applicant applied sale prices of the used homes for the row houses, but uses lower used home prices for the detached home. This is an unfair comparison. It's apples and bananas. The code allows for the square footage of an R one house to be a minimum of eleven hundred square feet, yet the applicant uses fifteen hundred square feet, thereby showing a thirty percent greater factor pushing the cost higher than what the code requires, resulting, showing a worst-case scenario. You can get around this law anytime you want by showing a worst-case scenario and say, "I can't make money." What, what an insult. I mean, I've sat on the board, and if I was on your board, I'd be insulted by some of this stuff. Okay, I'm a senior citizen at seventy-six. I know I don't look it. Anyways, I've had three operations. Do you think I would ever consider going to a home where I gotta walk upstairs every day? I know many people in my condition at seventy, seventy-five. They would never buy a, 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 a home where they gotta walk up and downstairs. I don't believe that they would work this with senior housing. Yeah, they might get some seniors in there, maybe somebody fifty-five, fifty-eight. We have a lot of seniors in this town that are not in that category. They're a lot higher. The applicant should show the cost to meet the eleven hundred square foot home because that is what the code allows. Now, you don't need a three-bedroom home. Why? I had some rental property, and I, I don't say it's a good comparison, but I had sixty people that wanted to rent a three-bedroom house, one thousand square feet. I had sixty people, but one and two and three kids. You need three bedrooms for seniors? I don't think so. So you could, you could adjust the square footage of the living room and the kitchen, which I think is the most important thing for a lot of seniors. It is for me and my wife, anyways. The zoning board has the right to order its own appraisal, and I think it needs to. I think the numbers, you need to ignore them. There's too many things wrong. Simple mathematical inflated numbers, how can you even throw it away? Tell them to redo the whole thing. But I think you have a duty, since this is a major project, I think you, in my opinion, you have a duty to call for your own independent analysis appraisal, where this board will make that determination, not the administration. This board, not the administration. I won't go into that reason, but I think you need to look at this more carefully, and it doesn't bother me if it takes one month, two months, or three months. This is so important. I tell people who are frustrated on both sides, "Well, this is another meeting. This has taken months." And I say, "This is very important. It needs to take time, because look at the mistakes we found tonight." Gentlemen, this is not in the character of the neighborhood. This is not a mixed-use neighborhood. I've lived there. I've walked those streets many times. It doesn't work. Please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before, before, ma'am, before you speak, I'm just going to hand around to the board. We have a copy of the March twenty-fifteen resolution and the meeting minutes from February of twenty-fifteenth, raising the issue.
My name is Carol Watt. I live at forty Echo Street. I'm here tonight representing the East Aronacquite Central School District. I happen to be vice president of the Board of Education. On May ninth, we adopted a resolution, and I'd like to read that into record tonight. Whereas the land across from the East Aronacquite Middle School was vacant land when the East Aronacquite Middle School was constructed, and whereas it has come to the school board's attention that the current owner of the property has requested a use and setback variance from the town of Aronacquite to permit multifamily dwellings rather than single-family houses permitted under the existing zone, R one residential property, and whereas the Board of Education is concerned about the health and safety of its students and staff and the potential impact of the development of multi-family dwellings across from the middle school. Now, therefore, the Board of Education hereby requests, "We ask the town of Aronacquite to consider the health, safety, and welfare of the students and staff of the East Aronacquite Middle School when considering this application for use and setback variance. Also, we request the zoning board of appeals take into particular account the impact on traffic and students who walk or ride bicycles to and from school when considering the application for a use variance." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Herman Hetzler, twenty-six Astronaut Drive. Okay, I've been at Aronacquite sixty years, and I gotta beat that other guy, because I'll be eighty-six in August. The one worry I have is safety with the kids. And if we cut corners, we don't go with the R one, we should stay where we are. We shouldn't be dealing with this problem as a hardship that we all gotta chip in and save somebody. If somebody made a bad deal, it's a bad deal. We're gonna have to live with it. But that's my, I was here when that mess that they want to put this, these houses in, up there, when you could see through the first part. There's nothing in there but washing machines then, and old gas cans, paint cans, and everything else. And I don't think anybody's done any cleaning for the sixty years that I've been here on that property. So if you're gonna buy it, do you know what's underneath it and how much you gotta clean up? up? I don't know. Like I said, we're not in here to take care of hardships. That's it.
Hello, my name is Joey Evershed, and I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. The applicant and his team have presented additional revised financial information after changing and fixing their numbers once again. With my financial background, I was taught numbers don't lie. So it begs the question, how has the applicant come to several different numbers? Numbers should be concrete, definable, traceable, et cetera. Either incompetence or manipulation is present when numbers continue to change and adjust after the board questions the values first presented to them. How did they magically change the numbers more palatable? Were there several large errors, or was there manipulation of numbers to make them look a certain way? This round, the average sale price is $125 per square foot for a standalone detached home with an average total cost of $208,438 per home. Four builders were consulted in the study, but only really two of those values off that letter seem to be present in the rest of the documentation. Did builder one's numbers not tell the story the applicant wants to paint? Who uses a sample size of two or even four to justify value so crucial that zoning could be changed? Did these builders build 31 homes or a single home? Their average cost for 31 would be significantly lower than one home. That is like me asking two people if they smoke cigarettes and have them both say yes. I would conclude that 100% of people smoked cigarettes. I took a survey. Or I could stop a few random people in a ritzy neighborhood and ask them what their annual salary is. I might ask three people. One might say 1 million, another could say 2, the last might say 3. With this logic, I walk away and even proclaim and argue that the average person makes $2 million a year. If I were to present a valuation project to a valuation professor and offer comparable companies to project what I believe future cash flows might be for the company I'm valuing, I would fail. For comparisons, two really is not close enough data to justify any kind of projections. The comparison builders could be vastly different. I offered a national average from the National Association of Home Builders, but the applicant must not have liked those numbers. The applicant does not want to use those numbers. They want to handpick and choose data that best paints the picture they want. We cannot allow greed and unethical practices on top of poor business decisions to hurt our community just so an out-of-town contractor with an out-of-town lawyer can make a buck. On page 5 of the appraisal, of the Bruckner appraisal, note that, I'm quoting, "Note that there were no duplex or townhouse unit sales. Thus, single-family sales were used for comparison, being consistent with analysis for the single-family detached units," end quote. This is just from today. These are some townhouses I found that are on sale in Zwillow. The applicant also assumes that a town home equal in size to a detached home in this county would sell for an average of 10% more. That's also in the appraisal. If given the option for a detached home that is 1,300 square feet and a town home that is 1,300 square feet, and they're the same price, which would you buy? Ask yourself that question. What are you buying? You believe that a rental row home with everything else equal is worth 10% more than a single-family home? A yard, driveway, additional privacy takes value away? The applicant isn't even comparing units the same size. What does 1,300 square feet look like? What does 1,100 look like? Additionally, the applicant and his team have made another error on page 14 of the appraisal. It's highlighted there. Factored into the per-unit cost for each detached home is a cost of $200,000 for the land. The land was only sold for $150,000. This is either just yet another mistake by a team of professionals, or the land was actually purchased for $200,000 while only being reported as 150. This sometimes occurs in large transactions in an attempt to pay less in taxes. This, of course, is tax fraud, and the parties involved could be subject to fines and even prison. Any parties knowingly working with applicants and covering such fraud are, of course, subject to prosecution as well. The developer and his team have offered no compromise from the start. They have dug their heels in and refused to work with the community and reach middle ground or make adjustments to their plans. This itself shows the disregard the developer has for our town. His sole focus is on big profits regardless of the costs bearred by the community. The applicant has been given enough opportunities over the last several years to provide accurate and defendable data. How many chances does the applicant get to tweak and craft the numbers? The entire process has been unprofessional and corrupt. Mr. Knopf and the rest of the team will continue to get back up to this podium, lie, or cry it was just another error, just like the letter previously. Please just remember whose payroll they are on. As the zoning board, please look out for the best interest of the citizens and communities you protect, not for the out-of-town developer and the team looking to attack the community for a quick buck. Thank you for your time and for your service.
I just have one question. By out-of-town developer and out-of-town attorney, are you referring to out of Aranacoid, out of Monroe County?
Out of Aranacoid.
Out of Aranacoid?
Yes.
I just wanted clarification on that.
Because this project doesn't directly affect their home.
Because my understanding is that both Mr. Knopf and Mr. Lichorelli are residents of Monroe County, and when you say "out of town," I'm not sure what you were implying.
Town of Aranacoid.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Corino. I'm gonna make it pretty short because it's getting kinda late, and I gotta get up in the morning, so I'll go through it. It's funny, I read an article a few days ago how rising-
I'm sorry, can you see your address?
85 Kennedy Circle. And I read an article today in USA Today how it states, "Home buyers demand a sky-high inventory levels and near rock bottom in how prices keep rising." Pretty interesting little article that I read because around here, you're saying they can't get the prices for the houses. One other question about that property on Party Road that they mentioned. I actually took a tour of their property. I went inside it. 199,000, open floor, new construction, three bedrooms, two full bags, great room, open, spacious kitchen, wonderful floor plan. You'll fall in love with two-car garage, storefront, no maintenance, exterior quiet. This is right across the street from Party School. I've got pictures of it. I took a tour of it. I walked inside it. He's asking 199, okay? Let's say you get 150 for something. This is a 1440-square-foot house. They're gonna be building three more over there. So for whatever he says, that's defeating his purpose, right? That this house, if you want to put this house compared to Densmore, I live behind Densmore any day of the week before I live over behind Party. Not to say it's bad, but what I'm saying about this house is. Another thing, read an article a couple weeks ago, and it was on WHC.com, rats overtake Aranacoid in a dumpster. Okay, it was at Sagamore Green, not bringing it up over here, but just some neighbors complain about, "How about the rats if this is a complex? Is it gonna have like townhouses or row houses or whatever?" My house would probably be sitting behind dumpsters. Who knows if these dumpsters are gonna be left wide open all the time? This is an article I read that the people in Aranacoid, they live behind Sagamore Green, are all ticked off because these don't, and they can't get a hold of the people that run the apartment complex.
Where is that, sir?
Sagamore Green Apartments.
Sagamore Green?
Yep. I got that article right here if you wanna read it.
I'm just, I'm not familiar with Sagamore Green.
Well, this is a-
What?
Yep.
Okay. Now, Strathmore, didn't you speak to Strathmore?
I don't know what it was. I'm just aware of what it says here, Sagamore Green Apartments. I'm just reading the article. You can pull it off, if you wanna take it, you can pull it off the website. There's pictures of the rats in there too. So I'll just be saying that to them. You can take that. But in closing, what everybody says is right. This has probably been my fifth timer. I've been going on this since 2000, whatever. It's been in the house since 1986. I was out there the other day with my little dog, just looking how beautiful here are the birds and everything. The core of the neighborhood is gonna be totally ruined if you put something like that back there. I mean, I know the numbers game's here and there. I'm not even going that way, but it's been a long evening, but just in closing, I would say to the board, "You gotta disapprove this applicant because, like I said, the neighborhood's beautiful. Put a school there if you can't put a townhouse, a row, you know, a few houses there." It's just a gorgeous, gorgeous neighborhood. The core of the neighborhood would be totally ruined. And bringing it back to the traffic, I do agree with that other guy. It's unbelievable, 7:15 in the morning and 2:30 in the afternoon. I don't care what they did, the traffic, say they did it on a Sunday, I don't know what they did it on. I've seen it. It's unbelievable, between buses and everything there. So with that being said, good night.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bradley Weidman. I'm the owner of 55 Kennedy Circle. And I'll keep my comments brief. I want to talk about two of the four requirements for a use variance, specifically the unique circumstances and the self-created situation. So the applicant has indicated a number of unique circumstances, the change in the law, the location, the creek, the school nearby, and how it's a mixed-use area. And everything there, except for the change in the law, that's been there. That was there when they purchased the property. So for everything except the change in the law, to me, those are clearly self-created circumstances. And so it's only really the change in the law that's a unique, that could be considered a unique circumstance for this property. And so the change in the law, that's what we should be, that's the only unique circumstance that we should be considering, in my opinion. And that's, oh, okay. So the other point I wanted to make is that change in the law, that's not something specific to this property at all. That's based on confusion the owner had with the town. And so it's really, it's not a unique circumstance of the land, it's a unique circumstance of the owner. And it's my understanding that the use variance should be granted based on unique circumstances of the land and not the owner. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
Michelle Decheck, 105 Kennedy Circle. I'm gonna be quick. It is past my bedtime, and I'm one of the youngest people in this room. I'm asleep by now. I'm up in a couple of hours. But I was really encouraged, listening for the past four hours in the back of this room, how much you're considering the size of a van, the size of a fence, and placement within property, and how that changes the character of a neighborhood. We're talking about a van, we're talking about a garage, we're talking about a fence. That is small compared to apartments, duplexes, townhouses, whatever term we want to talk about, that are exceeding the density in an R1 property. We know what R1 stands for, we know what belongs on R1, and you guys have been working on this, you've been talking about this for a long time. So I was very encouraged today, how much you're questioning how those small things are changing the characteristics of the town. We've talked in the past about safety concerns, not gonna bring that up again. We've talked about the burden of all these additional residents on the town. We're not gonna talk about that again. Traffic has been a major issue. I deal with it every day. It took me 17 minutes to make a left-hand turn on Norton Street this morning. The roads are falling apart. If you've been down Herbally, I know most of my neighbors don't even take Herbally anymore, when you go from our circle up to Culver Road because of the potholes, because of the patchwork, and the toll that it takes on our cars. So there's definitely issues, safety issues. I've almost been hit multiple times walking my dog. I have a giant white dog, most people here know. My dog is hard to miss, and I've almost been hit multiple times. And that's walking on the sidewalks, that's not even including in the winter when the sidewalks mostly are not plowed in our neighborhood. That's an additional concern, not only for residents, but for kids walking to school. There's a lot of kids that walk to and from. The only areas that are plowed is Densmore. In terms of actual that complex, there's gonna be parking, which noise. There's gonna be lighting. There's no halogen or fluorescent or those giant lights in a residential neighborhood. I don't want that in my R1 neighborhood. When I bought my property, R1, churches, single-family homes, schools, that's not included in that. The noise level is gonna increase, which is a major concern. So there's lots of concerns. It's not a mixed-use neighborhood. It's an R1 neighborhood. Are there apartments nearby? Yes. Is that zoned for R1? No. So I don't even think that's, you know, on the table worth considering. You know, there's assisted living facilities right next door, there's apartment right next door. Is one of the few spaces in the town left to be developed, is that what we want to put in there, is more apartments? Or do we want to keep the character of the neighborhood by putting single-family homes in that neighborhood like it's zoned for? So thank you for your time and listening to comments this evening.
I'm Evelyn Guera. I live at 171 Kennedy Circle. I just want to tell you this. They talk about, we've been here so many times that you've heard it all. And if you didn't, you weren't paying attention. I want to tell you, I'm 86 years old. I own a custom-made home, okay? I have a lot of problems, issues. I'm a cancer patient, I'm a heart patient, I've got other problems that I won't even go into, but I'm still upkeeping my home. Do you think for one minute I would sell my home and go and live in an apartment? If I need help and I'm a senior, I would go where I'm able to get care. I'm not gonna go to a townhouse or an apartment. Would you? When a person will, a person will stay in their home until they can't manage it. When they can't manage it, they're not gonna go to an apartment. They're gonna go and get help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just give a sentence. My name is Virginia Stringfellow. I live at 883 Whitlock Road. I'm sorry? 883 Whitlock, which is a cut-through from Densmore. Herbally is too, but Whitlock is so busy. As people come off the expressway, as people come up Hillendale, et cetera, they cut through so they don't have to go down all the way Norton to Culver. Also, I am very concerned about the children. It's very busy there, yes. I'm concerned about their welfare and the traffic, and that's all I want to say.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that wishes to address the application that's neither for it nor opposed to it? Does the applicant wish to respond to the public input portion of the hearing?
Yes, just briefly. Mr. Bruckner, just briefly address.
Yeah, just really quickly, first of all, I really appreciate the first lady that came up here. She was well-prepared, had a lot of information, and certainly did her research. Two points that she made is that apparently zoning allows for up to 38 units, single-family, and the minimum size of the 1,100 square feet. I did run the same numbers in my analysis and still came up with the same result, that the single-family development wouldn't be feasible. The only other thing that I will address is, in my analysis, there was a young man that came up here and used the word corruption a couple times. In my analysis, he was referring to the $200,000 sale price that was used by the engineer. When I did my analysis, I only used the $150,000 sale price. So I used what actually occurred, not what the engineer had. So I wanted to make that clear because he did use the word corruption several times, and I, quite honest, didn't appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to address a few points, I just want to clarify a question about the legal opinion. I gave Mr. Lee Chardello the opinion that the town code allowed duplexes, and I stand by that. There's no doubt in my mind about that. I had a conversation with Ms. Champion where she agreed with me. I thought it wise to confirm it, and that's why I sent an email to confirm. I don't necessarily think I would have gotten a ruling, I don't know what would have happened, but I confirmed it because it was a conversation, informal conversation with Ms. Champion. That's why I sent the email, so that I wanted to be sure it was clear what she had said, and she said I was correct. So that was the full story of what happened there. As far as, we didn't change any numbers. I did have the one typo. I'm really sorry I had a typo. But we didn't change our numbers. We were asked, Mr. Evans, I think, had asked the last time I was here, for us to dig into some more numbers to see what else we could find. And I couldn't really find, like, published numbers from the Home Builders Association, whatever. So I had to resort to calling builders. No one has come up, there were some people who've quoted national numbers, but no one has come up with any other numbers from local builders for Rochester Air that I recall. And I think everyone can agree that the numbers are consistent with what, you know, what you see in this community. There was some talk about some houses on Party. I believe those are right on Party Road. Correct if I'm wrong. Road, correct if I'm wrong?
I'm going to correct you.
Oh, is there?
It's a five parcel subdivision.
Okay, right on Party.
So, there's one or two of the properties face Party, and then there's a private road or private shared drive that will connect the other four lots.
And is there storm water system? I don't think you had the same kind of development costs and all that we had, we had extensive development costs between the stormwater system, the lengthy roads, the utilities, et cetera. As far as the, I think the one gentleman, although I call him that, but he did use, say, accused us of corruption and all that kind of stuff, but...
Enough!
But, I think he or Ms. Evershed, I think they read the report wrong. What Mr. Bruckner said was, he didn't find the sales of recent new townhouses in Renekweite, so we looked at, he did find them in Monroe County. So, what he did was, he compared the cost, or excuse me, the sale price of townhouses in Monroe County to the sale price of single-family homes, of new homes in Monroe County, and found that generally, the townhouses went for 10% more. So, then he said, the same principle basically would apply to Renekweite, but to be conservative, he used the single-family number, so it really is a conservative analysis. As far as the mixed-use, that's what, the planning board agreed with us, this was mixed-use, if you look at the NAG deck, so that's in the NAG deck. As far as, we're not going to have dumpsters, there's individual garbage receptacles, and the, I think that was pretty much the points, but, oh, and the 31, even though the site capacity worksheet said 38 lots, you've got to lay it out, and when the engineer laid it out, you can only do 31. I mean, that's all it would fit, because there are so many constraints on the site. We had the steep slopes, we tried to stay back from the steep slope, and minimize on the impact on the woodlot and all, and just the shape of the lot, that's why we can only fit in 31, even though, when you crunch numbers on the site capacity, it says 38.
Enough! I said there's not going to be any of that. Please leave. Apparently, you didn't think I was serious. The only one talking is from the podium. I said leave. I told you earlier. If anyone else can't be quiet, you can leave now. Only the person at the podium, or members of the board, or anyone who's asked, are the only ones that we want to hear at this point. I've given everyone an opportunity to tell us what you wanted to tell us. You've had an hour and a half to come up to the podium and talk. No one's been silenced, no one's been cut short. Everyone will get the same respect that you received when you were up here, or chose not to be up here, and anyone who can't follow that can leave now. Go ahead, Mr.
Okay, well, I think that's all I have, I think we have shown the four required factors for the use variance, and again, we would ask that the board approve the application, both for the use variances and the area variances. We think this will be a great project, and really, a positive for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing with respect to this application is now closed, the board will take a brief recess of about 10 minutes, we'll resume at 11:30.
The matter that we have before us involves the application for 160 Densmore Road. A negative secret declaration has previously been made by the Town Planning Board, who was designated as the lead agency with respect to that, so for secret purposes there has been a negative use or negative declaration for secret purposes. This matter has, I think, been pending for at least two years. I think we've had at least three public hearings. The last public hearing on this was held when? The one that was continued open was in May, right?
I believe it was conducted in April and then carried over until tonight.
Carried over to tonight. We've had lots of input over the last two years from neighbors who have come out in more numbers than any other application that we've had during the time that I've been on the board, which is probably about ten years now. They've given us figures, they've given us counter figures. One application was for, I think, fifty-four units, another was for seventy-something, the current one is for sixty-two. We've had lots of input, we've had lots of written submissions, and personally, I would like to be able to review and watch all of the public hearings and listen again to all of the public input and the input from the applicants that has been presented over the last two years. I'd like to be able to go through and read all of the documents that have been submitted, both in support and against the application. I've read through, in detail, the negative declaration that the planning board issued. It consisted of, I believe, one written narrative portion was about thirteen pages, I think the other was about nine, and there were probably about ten to twenty pages of additional materials of traffic studies and environmental studies and core drills and all that kind of stuff that went into the negative declaration. I don't think that it's fair to the applicant, I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to make a decision in fifteen or twenty minutes of brief discussion after all that we've been through. I would move that we table this matter for deliberation and decision only to the July meeting. I would ask the town to put together a packet for each of us of all of the written submissions that have been made and a disc or two if it's necessary, or three, however many it takes, of all of just the public, the public input and the applicant presentations with respect to this application since the first application was submitted. I know personally, I intend to read through all of that, I intend to watch all of the discs so that everything is fresh in my mind, and we will take that up first on the agenda in the July meeting ahead of any of it, so you might want to schedule the other cases to avoid inconvenience to those applicants and anyone who wants to speak. You might want to schedule those for like seven forty-five, eight o'clock, because I would suspect that we would probably be spending quite a bit of time deciding this, and if we do it first, then they're not going to be inconvenienced because they can come later.
I'll second that. I agree, we just finished a public input hearing session that lasted four years, months. I know we first asked for information back, I think in May of last year, for the dollars and cents analysis, there's a lot of information to go over, and I think that to give everyone a fair and complete analysis, I think that we should take our time to review the materials and then discuss it in detail as a board at our next meeting.
I've also asked our attorney to prepare and circulate to us in advance of the meeting proposed findings for granting the variance and proposed findings for denying the variance, so that we can have in front of us some proposed findings that we can help shape discussion and stimulate thought. So I believe that will also be in the works, and then we can, I think that'll help us in terms of clarifying what findings we agree with, what findings we don't agree with, and may help and it may not, but I think it's worth a shot. Any discussion or comments from the board? All those in favor of tabling the matter to the July meeting for decision and deliberation and decision say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The board is all continues to be present. Motion carries seven votes in favor, no votes opposed, no abstentions, and we're all present.
I know, yeah.
Before we adjourn, circulated with the packet of the materials were meetings, minutes from the April third meeting. I was not present, Mr. Polino was not present, Mr. Upson was not present, so Mr. Evans, Mr. Rintini, Mr. LaPerry, and Mr. Thomas, did you have an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes, sir, I did.
All right, would one of you like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Mr. Thomas moves, Mr. Evans seconds. Of the four who are present tonight, who were also present then, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved by a vote of four. Votes in favor, no opposed, three abstentions because we weren't here. And everyone is present. I believe that concludes. Again, I'd like to say that it's a pleasure to be back.
It's good to see you.
For the hard work you did in my absence, and we'll see you in July. Lord Willing and the Creek don't lie. (end of transcript)